All right, it is 7:30. So, welcome to everyone to the Monday, July 6th, 2020 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. This is a work session. We are delighted you all are with us by video link. Madam Clerk, do you want to start by reading the meeting notice?
Mayor, if it's all right with you, this is Cindy Mester and I'll do it this evening for work session.
All right.
The meeting for which this agenda, July 6th, 2020, work session, has been posted and will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted for the continued government operations during COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of City Council will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at the city's website, as well as on FCC TV, Channels Cox 11, RCN 2, and Verizon 35. City Council work sessions are conducted to allow council members to discuss upcoming legislation and policy issues. The public is not generally invited to speak. Public comments may be sent to City Clerk at Falls Church VA. All comments are provided in full to the members of council and will be summarized at the next regular city council meeting. And with that, Mayor, would you like me to call roll?
Please.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z is absent this evening. And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and again, welcome to all. Our first item is the 10-acre site, and we're going to hear a presentation from the developer. Mr. Shields, did you want to introduce the matter, or how would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. I would like to just say a word or two, and then I'll turn it over to Carly Aubrey for a staff report, and then we'll turn it over to the Falls Church Gateway Partners, who will walk us through the site plan. The few words that I wanted to just say at the outset is, one, I think this is a great milestone that we have the site plan now before the city council. The request is that the council schedule this for a formal referral to boards and commissions at your next regular meeting on July 13th. We know we'll get lots of comment and lots of input on the site plan that you'll see tonight, and the council ultimately, which is unusual for this to be the first time for the city council, the council ultimately will cast the final vote on approval of this site plan. I also just want to note that while it's been a while since this project has been before the public, I think the last site plan discussion was before the Christmas holidays and New Year's holidays. A great deal of work has been happening, and you'll hear about that from the development team. But it's been a coordinated effort. We still are having our bi-weekly infrastructure meetings with the combines, the school team, Gilbane Construction, the architecture team for the school, along with all of the city staff, DPW Planning, and of course, the development team and their architects. And that forum is where we work through all the coordination on construction and work to solve problems. And I just want to thank all the people who've dedicated so much time to that effort. So tonight, we'll hear on the site plan. So let me turn it over to Ms. Aubrey for a staff report, and then we'll go to the development team for a walkthrough of the plans.
Good evening, council. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
For some reason, my Skype window disappeared, but I got my notes, so I'm good. So council was requested to provide feedback on the first submissions of, first, an application to amend the previously approved special exception entitlement, and B, an application for a special exception site plan for Phase 1 of the proposed project. The applications are scheduled for public hearing and referral to board and commissions at the next meeting on July 13th. The SCE approved on July 8th, 2019, governs the general locations of the buildings, the height of the buildings, the location type, and amount of individual uses on the site, the infrastructure and transportation, public facilities and utilities, and other aspects of future approvals. The proposed amendment will be treated procedurally the same as a new application, and it should rely on prior approval and meet standards of the zoning ordinance. The approved SCE included two phases. An SESP application has been filed for Phase 1. This process is intended to result in an approval based on recommendations from staff and boards of commissions and considerations used in approving site plans, as well as special exception criteria. City council should rely on the planning commission and staff in determining if site plan requirements and considerations have been met. The SCE amendment and SESP review processes will occur concurrently, and it consists of referral out to the boards of commissions, staff review and review by the planning commission, and the other boards, and then action by council. So, go through briefly the proposed changes from the approved SCE that are requiring an amendment to that. The first one is adjustment to the parcel boundary overall and the Phase 1 boundary. And the request is to add approximately 1/3 of an acre in the southwest corner of the site, which is located on the future school parking lot location. And within this proposed new parcel boundary, an amendment to the Phase 1 boundary is also requested, and these are to accommodate changes in building orientation in Blocks B1 and B2. And these changes are shown in Attachment 3 that were provided with the staff report. Another amendment is to proposed uses. One is for the civic space requirements. The comprehensive agreement and approved SCE included a minimum of 20,000 square feet of civic space, and within that, there would be 8,000 to 12,000 square feet of event space, including a 4,000-square-foot outdoor rooftop terrace. And this space was to be occupied by a music or entertainment venue. And then there was an additional 4,000 to 8,000 square feet to be occupied by performing arts or education studio. The proposed development now includes, reducing this proposed square footage is around 19,000 square feet. They are requesting to reduce the minimum requirement to 17,000 square feet and have a reconfiguration to this space to include an indoor conference room space in the Phase 1 office building of approximately 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. And this would include the previous 3,000 square feet conference space originally provided in the hotel. The outdoor event space of approximately 4,000 square feet would be located in the Commons. And then the education and art space of approximately 6,000 to 14,000 square feet would be in the Phase 1 residential condo building, which is Block C, which is the same as the approved SCE. In addition, the development team is requesting some addition of commercial uses that are not explicitly listed in the approved SCE. Some of these can be considered a type of retail or accessory to permitted use. However, some uses such as the proposed daycare and pet service uses would require a zoning code text amendment to allow for city council to consider those uses, because they are not listed as permitted uses in the B2 zoning district. And current special exception regulations give council the authority to consider only increased heights and residential uses within B districts. The third one, I've kind of touched upon, the general building locations. Maybe the proposed changes, not just to B1 or to Blocks B, but as well as Garage D2, which you'll see in the developers' presentation extends a little bit beyond what's original footprint. And this gets to the next proposed amendment, which is for street layout. Because of the Block D2 garage, which kind of breaks up that one street that was Street A into two blocks, or two streets now known as B and C. And then Alley 1, which wasn't open air, alley through Block A is now enclosed. And then, let's see, and additionally, there's the entrance to the project at Route 7 and Commons, which has been narrowed and angled from the original approved SCE. This is a subject of ongoing coordination with VDOT and Fairfax County, and is an anticipated change in future submissions. In terms of phasing, we are proceeding with all the uses in Phase 1. There is the possibility that the senior housing partner may come in as a sort of sub-Phase 1. They're a little behind on getting their submission, their details in. So, but that should be here within a few months. And then the final are the SCE voluntary concessions, and that's basically what I've described above in terms of uses, and also the request to remove the requirement that owner not receive permits for the last 100,000 square feet of residential use until office and hotel has commenced. On page, or on line 356, there is a table, just wanted to point this out. It's a comparison of the square footages of the uses between what was approved in the CEA, the SCE, and now the SESP. You can see that all the uses are within their parameters. There is the exception of the civic, which we have discussed. And then also point out, the SCE elements have been analyzed with the proposed amendment. And basically, the density is approximately the same. It's still at around 3.5. Major uses remain the same. The commercial square footage and residential square footage ratios are about 31.4% to 68.6% for Phase 1. Building heights remain generally the same. There are details of the building heights on line 469 of the staff report. And parking locations have changed in that some of the underground parking has been moved above ground. Approximately 1,330 spaces are proposed. They are requesting an approximate reduction of 31% from the city code, and then compared against the city's shared parking analysis, that's a reduction of approximately 21%. They are basically within the ratios of what they were approved in the SCE. The staff report includes comprehensive plan analysis. I won't go into all those details, except that we are recommending they continue to look at massing and building, particularly for Block A at the intersection of Haycock and 7. Look at the encouragement of retention and expansion of existing businesses, and looking at avoiding waste generation and financial costs associated with waste management. Terms of special exception analysis, they generally meet the primary and secondary criteria. And as we go through the process, we'll be reviewing what they have submitted, along with additional information they'll submit regarding traffic impact analysis, shared parking, ADUs, and merchandising plan. A site plan analysis, I expect to have a completed staff comment letter for the July 13th hearing. Some key comments that were identified at the time of this report are included. Preliminary, in terms of fiscal impact, might have the numbers from the SCE. We are waiting some updated information in order to do a updated fiscal analysis, but that is anticipated for the July 13th hearing. And in terms of timing, the schedule is after referral. We'll have the board and commission meetings primarily in July. We might have one in September due to July and August recesses. School Board, July 14th. Planning Commission work session, July 15th, with a recommendation from them on August 5th. And then another work session with council on August 10th. And then the development team would work on a new submission for probably late September, October. So, that's my presentation. I'll take questions now, or we can turn it over to the development team.
Why don't we go ahead and turn it over to the development team? Thank you, Ms. Aubrey. Why don't we go ahead and turn it over to the development team and then take questions as they might lie? Evan, are you here?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. Thanks for coming back to see us.
Yeah, thank you. It's a pleasure to see you all under these circumstances, at least by video. So I think the presentation is just loading. I'll give a two-second intro while it's loading. There we go, perfect. So just so you all know, there's about a four or five-second delay on the slides when they're flipped. So I'll do my best to keep things moving along. Tonight's presentation is fairly in-depth and has a lot of breadth. As you can imagine, we have a number of buildings and site design and a little place-making. So, anyway, I think it's exciting, and hopefully it'll be helpful for all of you to get a really close understanding of the project. So, thank you for having us. Really appreciate being here with the council. I'm Evan Goldman, Executive Vice President of Development and Acquisitions for EYA. We'll have our team introduce themselves at the end during the Q&amp;A portion, but Robin McBride and Laura Seanfeld from Hoffman will do some speaking during the presentation as well. And with that, I'll kick it off. Okay, we can go to the next slide. There we go. So the agenda for tonight, we'll talk a little bit about the SCE, where we were at the end of last year, the economic context of kind of the environment we're all living in and how that might impact the project, key guiding principles for the approved plan of the SCE, the proposed SESP, improvements to the SCE from the SESP. There's been some changes that we think are for the better. We'll go through place-making, site design, architecture, and public benefits, and we'll do that all as quickly as possible to be appreciative of your time, respectful of your time. And then we'll deal with, of course, answer any questions that any of you may have at the end. Let's go to the next slide. Sorry for the delay. So I just wanted to hit this up front. Obviously, it's on everybody's mind. And we've been talking to Wyatt on a weekly basis. We have regular meetings to talk about the project and its process. And we do a kind of a check-in on COVID in general. And so, you know, we think this is an amazing site. We believe in this project. At the same time, there are unbelievable headwinds right now. There's just so many unknowns with retail, hotel, and commercials. So we want you to know that we're following those sectors closely. We're continuing to talk to the equity and debt capitalization markets on a regular basis. We're continuing to talk to Wyatt on a regular basis. And we're going to do whatever we need to do, the best we can, to get this project to a place where it's going to work for the city and for us, long-term. But we just don't know right now what that means for retail and what retail's going to look like six months, nine months, 12 months from now. So I think that, you know, our best recommendation is for continued communication back and forth between us and the council. And together, we're going to figure out a way to get through this. But with that said, we were really excited to present a project tonight that is just fantastic, and we hope you really enjoy it. So let's go to the next slide. Okay, perfect. So this is an image of the SCE plan that was approved last year. And so with this plan, there were some key guiding principles that we used to design the site, almost, actually, quite frankly, all of which have remained. The biggest obstacle we faced was the grade change from Haycock going up to Commons. I just wanted to remind you of that. It's about 23 feet from Haycock to the Commons along these Burke Pike. That created this idea of a central retail street that goes up from the Commons all the way to Route 7, and thus is a flat street. And so instead of having a hill, the retail can be flat, which is the best way to have retail successful. I'm actually here, I just got a text message that people are having a hard time hearing me. Is there an issue with my sound?
It's slightly echoey. I mean, personally, I can hear you just fine. It's not perfectly clear, but it's audible. I can hear you. It's a little bit of a breaking up, just a touch, a touch of echo, but it's not too bad.
Okay, so if this becomes an issue, just interrupt me, and I can call in from my cellphone instead, if that's helpful.
Okay, well, anyone on the call, you may be hearing differently than I am, but so far, I think it's acceptable.
Okay. Okay, so with that, the Commons would have the main retail street from the, to be respectful to the high school is one of the guiding principles, and make sure that the development and design we're doing integrates with the high school and sets back appropriately from it. And then probably the most important is this idea of the big bang, of delivering all of these different uses at once, so that the main street comes alive on day one. And that's the reason why we have senior housing, hotel, office, apartments, and condo all on that main street, so that we can bring them all in together without competing with each other from absorption perspective. And all of those really values or parts of the SCE live on through the SESP that we've submitted. So let's go to the next slide. Just going to the next slide. There we go. Okay, so this slide is taking that a step further, looking at the larger context and vision of the site. On the left is an image of our property within the context of the existing conditions. And on the right is the larger context that we're working on collectively with Virginia Tech and with Womata. And so to give you all an update, the Hoffman team and EYA team have a partnership with Rushmark to redevelop the Womata site. And we are going through a comprehensive plan process for that site, which would have residential, a little bit of retail, and commercial, office. Virginia Tech has selected Rushmark as their developer, and they're building an academic center on the northern side of the block, and on the south side of the block would be residential. The most important thing is that the park space, the open space that we've planned going up the spine of our project will continue through the Virginia Tech site. That is where they're headed design-wise. So our 550-foot-long park will become a 900-foot-long park, which is really fantastic news for the overall project. And then you can see the connectivity to the metro, and of course, the grid of streets and connectivity to Federal Realty Shopping Center through the shopping center, and to all the other great economic development that you all have planned on the buyer's side and beyond. And so, let's go to the next slide.
I've transitioned to it.
Sorry, I do apologize for the delay. There we go. Okay. So, this is the meat of the presentation, before we get into architecture and renderings and all the fun stuff. And so this is, on the left is our proposed SESP plan. On the right is the SCE plan. So you can see the two of them together. And I'm going to walk you through the five or six modifications that we're requesting from the original SCE. The first and most clear one here is that in the old plan, Street A used to continue all the way from Haycock up to our main street. And the issue that we ran into there was it was about a 20-foot slope or 20-foot grade, and so it was a big hill. And we had a really difficult time figuring out a way to make that handicap accessible and safe, and safe for kids as well. And so we came up with this idea that we presented to the community last fall, and I believe to the council too, where we used the parking garage as a means to pick up the grade, so that you come in at the lower level of the garage off Streets C and the higher level, one of the higher levels of the garage off Street B. And that allows Street C and Street B to be flat. And then we created a pedestrian connection going through that creates a safe place for retail shoppers, as well as for students, to cut through the middle of the block and get up to the Commons. And what you'll see in a few slides is some really cool designs that we've come up with for that space. Since we presented this last fall, we took the feedback that we heard and pulled the residential building back from the garage phase. So you can see that green area that separates from the garage is much more open now than it used to be. And the portion of the, what I'd call the via, is only about 60 feet long. It used to be 120. And we have some really cool ideas for making that a great place. So that's number one. Number two, which we presented last fall as well, is the idea of combining the apartments into one large building that still has micro and regular units, and will be marketed as such. But it's one larger building, and the benefit of that is it allows us to take advantage of the parking and allows us to take advantage of a more efficient building. And that came from last December, when we finally got our plan priced from a construction perspective, given where construction pricing is right now in the market and has been. The cost to do the smaller building separate from the larger was so much more astronomically higher per foot that we needed to make this change to stay within the bounds of the project economically. And now, of course, given COVID, we're happy we did that, because it ended up being a move that we would have needed to do. On the northwest block, that building has been converted to a condo. That's Block C1. And that building terraces away from the school. And you'll see in a moment, that's one of the most exciting buildings from an architectural perspective in the project. Another change is the office and hotel buildings have flipped about 90 degrees. And as you heard from Carly, we have moved the office parking above grade. And while I know that that's not ideal in some cases, once again, given where the economic situation was six months ago with construction costs, and now with COVID, it's a move we're really happy we made. It's a move we would have had to make, given the current economy regardless. But more importantly, what that does is it creates a space that in the future could be an economic development opportunity for the city. As, you know, when and if, I should say when, cars eventually do go away, 30 years, 40 years, whenever that may be, that piece of property will be able to be developed for economic development. As a result of these changes, we have had to shift the B4 office building slightly closer to the high school by about 60 to 65 feet. And that's something we've shared with the school board and with the schools, and you can see the impact of that here. And then we would be replacing that school parking when we go ahead and build that Phase 2 office building. One of the great benefits is the office building B1 now fronts along Route 7. And you'll see in one of our future slides, we have a much better kind of front building experience or pedestrian experience along all of Route 7, given this change. And you're also noticing a change at the bottom, as you enter the project, off of Route 7 at the Commons. And you can generally ignore that first block of the design. That was a compromise that we were trying to get approved between us and VDOT and FCDOT. And so we went with that design. It ultimately got rejected by VDOT and FCDOT about a month ago. And so we're working on a revised design, which I'll share with you tonight. But, so you can ignore that image, that part of it. The other changes, I think I hit everything. Oh, and then finally, architecture. We had these community meetings that were really helpful back in November and December with a bunch of your boards and commissions. And given that feedback, we have made some modifications to the architecture, which we'll share tonight. Let's go to the next slide. The delay gives me a chance to catch my breath. So this slide is showing you a proposal for a new intersection at Route 7 and Commons that we think is an improvement over where we were a month ago when we submitted our SESP. And the feedback we had gotten from VDOT and FCDOT was that they wouldn't accept the offset intersection. In order for us to have an intersection at this location, it needs to be a perfectly straight intersection. At the same time, there were concerns from the community to the south about having a traffic light at Chestnut, because of fear of cut-through traffic through that neighborhood. And there was also fear on our part, because we have an office building designed in that location for obvious reasons, specifically because we were told originally not to have the roads lined up. And so at this point in the game, that would be very hard to move. So we came up with a compromise, working with our property owners to the south, that essentially closes off Chestnut at a hammerhead and creates a new traffic light that is at the project entrance and goes across to the shopping center across the street. There would be a public access easement, so that the public can get through to Chestnut Street, which provides the local community a way to get in and out onto Route 7, as well as the commercial property owners who really want the traffic light badly. It creates safe pedestrian crossing. It creates a perfect intersection. But what it does do, because Chestnut now ends, for people who are cutting through, it's a traffic calming measure. They'd have to go through a shopping center parking lot, which obviously isn't as ideal. They'd have to go through a shopping center parking lot, which obviously isn't as ideal as just coming out of a street. And so that should limit the number of cut-through cars. And then second into that, if you're using Waze or you're using Google Maps, those programs won't pick this up as a way to cut through the community. And so that as well should cut down some of the, some of the traffic. So while, you know, I don't know that there's any perfect solution for this intersection. What this does is it allows the members of the community who want access and the commercial property owners to have that access, while still pushing off cut-through traffic. And for the city, most importantly, it allows a left-in and a left-out at our major economic projects' main street intersection. It gets rid of the odd-shaped angular entrance. So now with a straight entrance, you can see we've picked up much more stormwater management and open space at the south end of the project. And then finally, it creates a safe pedestrian crossing, which will encourage people to shop and use the project, but then also to go to the metro with better ease. And I'm happy to answer questions about this during the Q and A. So the next slide. Okay, sorry, you can skip through this one too. I should have told you in advance.
All right, I've transitioned to the retail level.
Yeah, that's, that's the next slide. That's great. Okay, great. So in keeping with the project that we had proposed a year ago, all of the red on the main streets are, is representing retail. The aqua are civic amenities. And so the, the guiding principle of retail pedestrian-oriented streets holds, but we've improved the retail pedestrian experience along Haycock and Route 7. And you can see now that not only do we have the grocery store at the corner of Haycock and 7, we have retail going up Route 7 towards Commons. We have retail turning the corner on the office building. We've created the event space, music venue in Aqua on the first floor of the office building where the cursor is showing on the northwest of the plan towards the high school where the, or upper right where the aqua is, that's where the music school would go still across from the high school. We've extended retail a little bit further down Street A to increase the amount of retail. So this plan does have more total retail than what our original proposal was, which is good for the city from an economic development perspective. And we are considering actually having the retail go all the way to the corner of Lane 4 and Street A and having the music venue be a two-story space so that we can pick up a little bit more retail there as well. And what's great is that retail is directly across from the parking lot. And we have agreed with the high school to work with them on, you know, making sure that the tenant mix there would be appropriate. Then the other piece that you wouldn't have seen is that we've added retail along Haycock. We have a, we can actually go to the next slide. Sorry. There we go. So in this slide you're seeing now at Haycock, because of the grade change, the grocery store, as you may remember, sits up on the air about 20 feet above Haycock because the, because of the amount of grade. So you have an entrance to the grocery at the corner and then you go up to the grocery store. We had originally had residential liner along Haycock. And what we've changed this to is a 10,000-square-foot piece of retail. We'd like to use it for a daycare, which is why we've asked for a modification to the B2 zoning reg or for the zoning reg for the zone. And then we've created an open space right next to the daycare in green that can be used for the outdoor play space for the daycare as well. The yellow is a resident, secondary residential entrance to the building. And so we still have a residential entrance down on Haycock as well, so our residents can come out and go directly to the Federal Realty Shopping Center or beyond to other projects down the street. And then one thing I will note here, you can see all of our lobbies on the Commons are very small because we're maximizing retail. The office lobby is really unique here. It's in blue on Lane 2. And it's situated on what will be a really cool Via/One Earth Space. I had to use that at least once in the presentation. And a One Earth is a shared space where cars and pedestrians essentially share the street. It's almost like a really interesting alley. For those who have visited the Wharf, you've seen those types of spaces. And so we want the pedestrian experience going back to the garage for all the visitors to be special. And that also is where the office lobby would be. So you'd come out of the garage, go directly across the street to the lobby of the office in blue. Or you would, same if you were just visiting retail, use that same space. And it's lined with retail on both sides as well. So we think that's another special space in the project. Go to the next slide. This is the overall SESP program. Why don't we go to the next slide? This is something we can come back to and answer. But generally, we are very close to where we were with the SESP submission on almost every single number. With the exception of we have more retail, basically. Next slide. There we go. Okay, so now we get to the fun stuff. This is an updated rendering showing what the project would look like on Main Street. We are at Virginia Tech. We're actually in the senior housing building, looking south towards Route 7. You're seeing the Commons really come alive. We've started to spend, you know, more time detailing the Commons with beautiful hardscape, with open space. You can see the green bike lanes standing out very strongly. You're seeing outdoor, the landscape beds, outdoor ping pong, fire pit. So the, really, the comments has really started to come together. One of the other things is the differentiation of the retail storefronts that allows the first floor of these buildings to really come alive. And then from an overview perspective, you're looking at on the right, the condo building. On the middle building being the hotel, the far building, the office, and on the left, you're seeing the apartment building. And what you might notice is that the architecture is more modern than we had originally proposed. And that was coming after getting feedback from some of you and from community members towards, in November and December of last year, we decided to make a bigger statement with the architecture here. And so while we have more historic-oriented buildings on the outside along Route 7 and Haycock, going down towards the Federal Realty Shopping Center, on the Commons, we've gone with a lighter palette. It's, it's whites and grays. There's some charcoal. And then every building has a pop of color, whether that's in the lettering, I'm sorry, the naming, the awnings, the retail popping. In the case of the hotel, you can see this really interesting yellow element coming down the building. You'll see on the residential apartment building in a moment, we did something similar. And what that does is it allows you to feel like you're in a place when you're in the Commons, that it all hangs together, as if it was thought of in a consistent manner. And anyway, that's where we are headed with the architecture. We're very excited where it's going. The next slide will show you the same Commons, but looking to the eastern side of the street towards Route 7. You'll see the apartment building, one that flips. There you go. You can see the roof of the apartment. There we go. Okay. So now you're down in the Commons. You're looking at the open space. There are swings to the right overlooking the open space. We've kept this largely flat so that it is great for events. But of course, we'll have movable furniture and we'll have the ability to program it on a regular basis. The building itself, that is the apartment building. There's a white brick front with a metal panel surround, and then you notice these red accents, whether it's the balconies or the mullions within the windows of the buildings. And we'll show you this a bit more in the architecture in a moment. And then that is a street going back towards the garage. That's Street B. The next image. We have one more rendering, which will show you the hotel. And then also show you this, the One Earth Space or the shared space that goes back towards the office lobby. And what you'll see in that rendering is there are these lights that go over the street and really makes it somewhat of a romantic space. So on the left, you can see that here where Cindy is pointing. Those are lights hanging between the hotel and the office. You can see people and cars in that pedestrian-oriented space going back to the garage, which is in the distance. And then the hotel in this image, as you can see, same concept. There's a background of white. There's some charcoals. And then you have these pops of color, in this case, with the wood-colored panels and the yellow brand at the lobby of the hotel. The hotel lobby sits right in the middle of the building. And then there are two restaurants planned for either side of the lobby. Let's go to the next slide. Okay.
I have transitioned. It gives people more time to look at your color popping.
Thank you, Cindy. So, so you know what, Cindy? You can just click through these every five or six seconds. Just click. So this is a 3D image looking at the site in white. And going up towards the metro, you can see the main street going from the Commons. It'll connect all the way through to the metro. And you can already click to the next slide. And you may have already. The two ghosted buildings are the Phase 2 buildings. And then the white building is the senior housing building, which we don't have the architecture for yet. You're now looking at the main entrance of the grocery at Route 7 in Commons. And then you can see the hill going up towards the Commons itself. This image is looking straight in the Commons from Route 7. And you get a sense for the open space in that image and the condo as it steps down to the high school on the far left. And we can, of course, come back to these images later. This image is important. It's looking from the school. And you can see how the condo is now set back from the Civic Plaza for the high school. There's a 40-foot setback there that wasn't there before. We've created a new street there that is exactly where Cindy is showing it, where the music school is. That provides a little bit more breadth and air to the high school. And then the condo we had always wanted to have graphics related to the high school on that facade fronting the garage. The next image will show you a bird's eye view from Virginia Tech looking down towards Route 7. And you really get a sense for the condo building as it wraps the corner with these really cool, the terracing going down towards the high school. The next slide will go into placemaking, I believe. There we go. Okay. So I'm going to spend a few minutes on placemaking and then we'll get into architecture. So over in the fall, we did quite a bit of work on placemaking as well. We had a historic tour. We know there are people within the City Falls Church. We actually did some research as well. And we came up with some guiding principles that we were using now to guide naming, marketing, branding, placemaking, the Commons development, and you'll see that throughout the next number of slides. Historics, these are the four pillars of our placemaking plan: historical and spirited, eclectic and refined, social and interactive, and sustainable. And the idea is to celebrate the history of the City Falls Church through historic, eclectic and refined. This idea of, we, part of what we love about the city, quite frankly, is that it is eclectic. It's got this incredible diverse mix of people, of buildings, of, of activities. It's just, it's such an interesting place and we want to celebrate that through placemaking as well. Social and interactive is the idea of making this the living room for the western part of the city. And sustainability, of course, is core to the city. And Tree City USA is something you'll see throughout the site as we've even started looking at using trees as the names for, tree names for the streets itself in the project. The next slide. Sorry.
I've transitioned.
I'll start giving you a heads up when I'm five seconds from the end of the, my comments.
It's a plan.
In five seconds, you can flip this one. So this is just a mood board. It's something we worked on with our marketing firm to come up with an idea for the types of imagery, the natural materials, the browns, the greens, the golds, that would play into the branding of the space and the place. And what, where we ended up also from that perspective is really doing research on the history that we are looking into celebrating through placemaking, and there will likely be more. But Thaddeus Lowe and Matty Gundry were two that jumped out to us in their role in the city. Thaddeus Lowe, we know that there is a recent mural of a balloon that just delivered in the City Falls Church. We, that might play into placemaking on our project as well. And then Matty Gundry is somebody we're going to celebrate through the project too. The name we came up with for the project is West Falls, and it was essentially a direct take on the location, but in a little bit of a casual way. We wanted an umbrella name that could apply not just to the property, but to the larger areas over time. And then that gives us the ability for the buildings themselves to have historic names, for some of the streets to have historic references, the murals, the art, the placemaking, so that we can celebrate the city's history and have a brand that can transcend just the site. And to some extent, Virginia Tech is using that name, West Falls, anyway, for their property. And that allows us to have it be a broader neighborhood instead of just individual projects. And go to the next slide. There we go. So this image is something I've shared in the fall as we started the Commons and really thinking through placemaking. There'll be different zones, a front door you can, you can flip, front door, food and beverage, park space, a play area, all integrated. And this hand sketch came out of a series of charrettes that we had as a group. And what it led to was a Commons design that incorporates all those elements. So once again, ignore the front end coming off Route 7, because that's going to change, as you saw, and we'll have more open space and stormwater management. But you can still see the two kiosks that we'd already proposed. The splash park just off the kiosk area to the left on the Commons in blue, the big open lawn space, the hardscape zone, which allows us to expand the lawn for larger events. You are seeing the fire pit, and of course, everything else is movable furniture. There'll be the ping pong tables. There'll be other activities going on that'll be movable. And then on the north side, our envision, we're envisioning a restaurant space up towards Mustang Alley that overlooks the open space in the park. Go to the next image. Okay, great. And so there's a separate document that accompanies our SESP submission called our placemaking guidelines or placemaking and amenity plan. And in that plan, we outline art and sculpture, canopy and shade, landscaping, hardscaping, murals and art, lighting. So all the key things that going, go into making a place great are outlined in that document. And so this is an example of a plan where we start pulling out imagery of what these different places might look like. And so whether it's a separate occasion or we do it through boards and commissions, that placemaking amenity plan will be critical to giving us, to giving you the city the comfort that you're going to get what you want on the Commons and on the open spaces, and giving us a little bit more flexibility than would be typical to come up with those art pieces and murals and placemaking elements over time. And also to modify them over time. So for example, we opened the project and two to three years later, you know, we want to put in different outdoor seating. We want to have that flexibility. You can see the next image. I think the next image is getting into architecture. Let's see. Oh, sorry, nope, two more. This, this is also another companion document. It's our retail storefront guidelines. And so why this is important is something we would share with the city. And what it does is it gives the retailers very specific direction on how they can create the frontages to their space with the goal of having unique and interesting and exciting-looking retail that, you know, hearkens back to a Main Street era and not, you know, the same exact modern glass storefront for every store. And go to the next slide. And so this is a compilation of what is a more detailed document. Okay, now we're at architecture. You can skip to the next slide. So this is showing the first building, which is the apartment building at Haycock and 7. I'm going to walk through the architecture for that building, and I'm going to hand it off to the Hoffman team to talk about the other three buildings. And so we're now looking at the building in the sugar cube model. One of the bits of feedback we had gotten during the process was was the fact that this is obviously a large building, and so the desire to break it up into multiple facades. If you go to, if you just click again, you'll see it'll pop up in color. What you'll see is we've broken out the building into different facades, so that this building that is really one building has seven or eight different facades as you go around, each of which have a unique feel, looking like a different building. And so it's our way of breaking down the scale of the building. There are some ins and outs to the building. It has some three-dimensionality. And you'll see that come through in the architecture as well. Let's go to the next slide. And so on the south side, as your southeast side, as you're getting towards the City Falls Church, the red and the orange are the more historic-looking facades. And then the blue, the yellow, the green and the aqua are the more modern-looking facades as we get towards the Commons. And so this, once again, is the room four. And so why, Cindy, why don't you click go on this one too? That way we'll skip right through this one to the architecture. But you're seeing on this facade, the modern architecture fronting towards the Commons. This is an elevation of that Commons facade. And so the two white brick pieces with the red mullions really jumping out, surrounded by a silk, a metal panel facade that is set back from the white panel. And that metal facade then receives this really pretty, these really pretty hang balconies, hung balconies that also have some detailing in red as well. And then that has a wood-toned panel that you'll see in a moment in a material board. Go to the next slide. The Falls will just, is a placeholder. Whatever the name of that building ends up being would likely be what we would have on that element there. Or that could have placemaking or a mural or something. We haven't quite gotten that far yet. This is just starting to show you the materials along Route 7. And so the white brick, the black brick at the base, which would of course have retail storefronts within it, the idea of the red panel, and then the silver, you can go to the next slide, the silver metal panel surrounding the white panel on the edges as well. That upper image is from a photo of a project in Bethesda where that metal panel has really come out beautifully. This is an elevation looking all along Route 7, and you can see now the slope. The Commons is to the left, Haycock is to the right. The, you can see the different facades as they go down the street, marching in different colors until they get to the more The, you can see the different facades as they go down the street, marching in different colors until they get to the more historic, uh, red brick building towards the corner. There's a grocery element which is in gray on the second level of the building, starting at Haycock and going all the way back towards the Commons. And that, um, those are the colors for the grocery itself. And so we started to incorporate their architecture into the building. Uh, and you can see the entry to the grocery at the bottom right. We've now completely covered the loading for the grocery and for the retail. That's, um, it's a cut through the middle of the building that's covered. So you don't have an open and exposed, um, kind of loading service court anymore. Uh, let's go to the next slide. We're going to, the next slide is a blow up of this upper left corner where you'll start seeing some of the materials for that portion of the building, which is the wood panel. There you can see it now. Um, and the idea is to have this warm wood color contrasting with the more stark white and gray so that it warms up the facade and gives a, gives another color added into the facade in addition to the red. Uh, you can go to the next slide. Um, the next slide is, okay, great. The Haycock facades. So these are two different historic buildings. You've got the red brick building and the orange or blonde brick building. The orange and blonde brick building would be akin to some of the more historic buildings you'd see in um, downtown DC and the Colorama neighborhood or parts of Georgetown. Uh, the red brick building being a more typical, um, kind of, uh, old historic building that you might see. And what you see here is the grocery store is on the second floor along Haycock. And then we're taking the ground floor for retail for the daycare center underneath the blonde brick building. And then you can see in white, that's highlighting the entry to the grocery store. You can click to the next slide, um, on the first floor. And we started breaking up the brick. In some places, the brick goes five stories and some it goes a floor lower so that there's a differentiation there as well. Um, and then we'll continue to, to work on that facade. This is a blow up of the corner itself with some materiality, material, sorry. You're seeing the different red brick, um, the, the panel. Um, you're seeing the, uh, kind of, uh, precast pieces separating below the windows. And then what's also interesting here is you're starting to see the details within the brick, which we hadn't shown in the past. So at the top, you're seeing, um, inset bricks, you're seeing brick within the column itself, going all the way down to the ground level. Some really cool medallions. And then what would be, what you'd also see is a differentiation in the red brick itself. In some places it'll be a, a darker mix with more red and some more gray tones. And so that even the columns will be differentiated from the, um, from the panels that are, are inset between the columns. Go to the next slide. Uh, this building, I believe, only has two more slides. Okay, you can hit, hit again. Um, we'll skip this, but the next image is going to be a blow up of the, of the right side of the building. So the materials on the more orange historic building. And you're starting to see that here. You can click to the next slide. Similar materials, uh, but just a different color, colorway. And then more brick on this building. And then the next slide is going to talk about the pedestrian connection going through from the Federal Realty Shopping Center up to the Commons. You're seeing it here in plan as well as imagery, precedent imagery. So the yellow dotted line is taking you past the daycare, um, up a grand staircase through the Via and out towards the Commons. The blue is a route to get to the elevators and up to the Commons as well, so that you can, uh, use it whether you are, um, need an elevator or staircase. The bottom right image is this idea that we want to create of a stair that really attracts people visually to come into that space. And then we're going to use artwork and murals along the walls of that Via to celebrate that space. And we have some really interesting ideas here, um, that, uh, we're with Thaddeus Low with doing things with balloons as part of the mural. Potentially a part of the story here being educational as well. You're seeing the idea on the left is these are lights hanging above your head. That's an open air space, that sixty foot space. So we want to bring the scale down with some overhead lights as well. The next image, um, will show you what these are precedent images. The next image will show you in 3D what our space looks like in a moment. And what you'll see is, um, a cut out of the overall apartment building, showing the pullback of the apartment building, the creation of the open space for the daycare. Um, there we go. So the bottom left image shows you the open space, how the yellow brick historic building gets pulled back from the garage. You can see the stair protruding from the garage, welcoming people up into the Via. And then on the bottom right, you're seeing the Via itself, um, with these lights hanging overhead. There's a bridge connecting from the garage to the apartment building. Uh, there's the bike room for the apartment building along that space. There's an entrance into the building for residents. Um, and so it feels welcoming and open and safe. And then I believe that's it. There may be one more slide and then it goes. We'll switch over to the Hoffman team. The next slide is the residential garage. And so this building is largely hidden from public view. It's behind buildings. Um, but where it is visible, uh, you'll see we've created a brick frame for the garage to, uh, number one, to hide some of the precasts and then also to make it attractive. And this is something that we've done in, in, after getting feedback from members of council as well as, uh, residents in the fall. And then we are creating some inset panels for artwork on the garage too. So at all of the main garage entries, uh, there'll be some kind of life size, larger than life size, um, artwork that would be integrated. And you can see in the white outlined by yellow would be the location for that, right above the entry to the garage. The gray parts of the garage to the right is hidden by phase two, um, and hidden by the senior housing building. And then the next slide shows the garage from the other view, I believe on Mustang Alley. And by the way, this was not included in our SESP package. We just didn't have time to get it in. So the garage, uh, concepts are still developing. This is the Mustang Alley elevation. So once again, you're seeing the idea of a nice, simple red brick facade. Uh, we did this to great effect at Pike and Rose and we can show you samples and examples of what it would look like. Um, and with that, I can go to the next slide. And I believe Laura or Robin, the next slide should be the office building. Yep, great. Okay. So why don't we hand it over to the Hoffman team? They'll talk through the office hotel and condo. And then we have one final slide on public benefits and, uh, we'll wrap it up.
Okay. Hi, it's Laura. Sorry, my computer froze for a second there. I got worried. Uh, let me try video, see how it works. Okay, I'm not. Video doesn't seem to be working, but I will tell you all about this side of this street. Um, so we can go to the next slide and we are going to talk through, um, the office building, which again, I think you're going to see a lot of the same, uh, concepts that Evan was talking about, but in different materials, uh, and a little bit more of a modern expression on this side, but we still have a lot of the same geometry. The ins, the outs that are created by kind of, uh, in this case, we have, uh, precast, two different colors of precast concrete at different, different depths that are going to bring a lot of visual interest to the building. Um, but what you're looking at right now continues, if you remember when Evan was discussing the hotel, uh, originally there's the Wunorf concept. So we had looked at the hotel with kind of the lights hanging to the left. Now you're looking on this bottom left, um, image at the, the other side of the Wunorf. So you have the office building where you're going to have, um, retail on the common side. And then you kind of go down the Wunorf a little bit and where the canopy is sticking out is actually the entrance of the office building. And if you look above, uh, you're seeing an elevation of, if you kind of stood with your back to the hotel and looked at the office building, um, you can see that kind of mid-space has the canopy and some interesting architectural, um, feature to, to make the entrance really stand out when you're there. And then, uh, like I said, the, uh, precast, uh, patterning with, uh, a lot of kind of modern geometric look. And then the, uh, rooftop, there is a, um, outdoor space that's kind of on the left of the rooftop. We'll see more in another image. Um, we can go to the next page. Sorry, I'll get used to telling you five seconds before I need to, to change.
No problem.
So these are a lot of, um, precedent images mixed in with our own imagery. So what you're looking at now on the left is the Commons elevation. So what you'll see when you stand on the Commons and look. Um, and as I was just talking to you about the kind of consistent patterning with the precast that we're going to have on all the other facades. This piece with the Commons is going to be more glassy, stick out a little bit and then be wrapped by this, um, piece that actually becomes the roof canopy. So you're seeing that image in the two bottom, um, images. And then the three above that are just precedents for kind of similar buildings that have the, the precast and the different depth and the two different colors to give you some ideas of how it's worked in the real world. Ready? Go to the next. And then this is the side that you'll see from Route seven. So again, you can see how it echoes, um, the side that's facing the hotel and on the Wunorf, um, a little bit more regimented on this side versus kind of that real special moment when you come into the, the entrance of the office. But we think this is going to be a really nice, uh, looking facade on Route seven. And then it also highlights what's going on with the retail below and the Civic that's, that's below. So, um, we think it'll give some opportunity for a real pop of color with those pieces also. And again, you're just seeing more precedent images, um, below of kind of similar geometry. So now we walk across the Wunorf and we go to the hotel, keep going. And I think you got a really good idea of this already from the, um, the rendering that we showed, kind of a, to give a sense of the Commons and the hotel facade. But we can go into a little bit more, um, detail here in a second. That was all my transition time. So here we are looking, uh, again at the, the image that we looked at, um, in Evan's presentation. You're seeing the hotel, uh, with the Wunorf, with the office kind of to the left of you. And we're really excited because the, um, hotel again focuses on kind of the, the geometry with a couple of special moments, um, like the glass at the corner, um, closest to us. And then the, again, the patterning of the materials and a little bit of, um, play with the depth to just bring more interest to what's a very long facade on, on the Commons. And then we have really, um, we, right now with the retail have planned to have, again, two big restaurants and possibly like a small coffee shop or other type of, uh, small mercantile use on the first floor. So I think it's going to feel like a lot of, um, you know, big city hotels you go into now where the first floor feels very loungy, people are working, people are having coffee. And all of those are actually, um, connected to the, the, um, the entrance that's right in the center of, of this image. So you're seeing again, on the left and the right would be the restaurant. Um, and we have the black brick that is surrounding all that with kind of a metallic canopy to separate, that's bringing a little bit of the classic look like Evan was talking about, but then again, a more modern facade above that. So kind of marrying the old and the new together to bring, um, visual interest to the building. Uh, sorry, we can keep going. And now we're looking at the, um, elevation that you'll see on Street A and on Lane three. So again, you're seeing that the patterning and the texture and the, um, the depth changes are still continuing around the building. So it's going to be visually interesting on really all three sides that you see. You actually won't experience that much of the, um, planned west facade in this because it's covered by the garage, but we'll talk about how exciting the garage is going to be when we get to that, um, that point, which may be the next slide. Here we go. So we have the garage. Like I was saying, you'll, um, the hotel really abuts it. And then there's kind of a, a small area, um, that's making the hotel look like a bit of a backward sea. And that's going to be a planted area that's used for stormwater management, um, which is a, a great opportunity to help, help the site with stormwater, um, while using some space that wasn't really usable for the, the interior of the hotel. And then it'll connect directly to the garage. And then the garage itself, you're looking at the facade at the bottom here from what you'd see looking at the school. And so you have kind of in the darker banded areas, you have precast, um, with like a, a brick inlay. So it'll be nice. Um, but then on, on top of all of these other areas, we are planning to do some sort of art program with the school. And it may be that we create, um, some sort of patterned panel look. And then every year, uh, the graduating class maybe, um, paints the, paints a panel or maybe the students determine what all the panels look like at one time and it changes throughout time. But we think it's a really great opportunity to be able to share, um, to be able to, um, share in the experience with the school and really connect back to the school. Next, um, slide. Uh, and again, these are just some examples, um, and you can already flip while I'm talking about this, but some examples of some murals, um, and ways that we can really incorporate the school and therefore incorporate the community into, um, the imagery that's going to be on the facade. And then, um, now we're just looking at the other facades and there's opportunity for some placemaking here too. Those are kind of the short ends of, of the garage. And then again, looking at a little bit more of the Wunorf, um, experience where, uh, again, if you've been to the Wharf, Pearl Street has that kind of same experience where, uh, in theory cars could drive on it. It's actually been closed for a while now, but, um, it, it's also a great place to, that you're going to want to walk. You're going to want to maybe, uh, stand and have a coffee with a friend or something like that. So now we're at the condo and I think Evan made a point about the buildings kind of go from a little bit more modern, uh, less modern to more modern in the, as you kind of transition from the bigger apartment into the rest of the site. They also go from a little bit, um, lower buildings to a little bit higher as you get into the site. But we also know that it was very important for the school to feel like the condo building, um, you know, worked well and, and gave some breathing room to the school. So, um, we'll talk about that and actually, if you can point to the bottom left corner, um, and we can talk about this a little bit more. But we actually ended up setting the building back further than you had seen, which I think Evan discussed in the introduction, by creating Lane four, which also helps with the school pickup and drop off and the music school drop off. Um, and then we've stepped the building back. So the experience at Lane four is different than the experience on the Commons. So what you're looking at right now is the elevation from Street A. Um, and you can see that it's kind of the full, um, the full, look, actually I don't think this is labeled correctly. This is the, the site, this is the Commons, um, uh, elevation. And you're looking, you're seeing the full height of the building. And this building is our most modern, um, and again, speaks a little bit to the architecture of the school also with kind of the ins, the outs, the big, um, vertical statements. But also really ties into all the other buildings in using, um, depth as a, as a big design piece. And you'll see that more with how the balconies work, um, when we go forward. So now you're seeing, um, from Mustang Alley in Commons Drive. So you're again seeing the facade that we just looked at, but you can understand what I was saying more about the, the depth being a real, um, design play here. But you're also seeing the stepping as you go down towards the school and kind of how the geometry, um, makes the building. I think it, it really, the, the kind of white superstructure and then the smaller, um, pieces by floor, I think just make this a very dramatic, um, modern building. But it's still got a timeless quality to it. Um, and we're, we're excited about how all, all the buildings are working together and creating, I think Evan made the point also about, um, we do have a lot of more neutral colored materials here. But as you can see, when we look at the renderings, um, especially you can see a lot more of the pops of color that we're going to be getting from the retail, from the placemaking. It's really a great opportunity to, um, to brighten it up. So I think that's, that's very good for the diversity of the look for the, for the space. Um, now we're looking at Mustang Alley. Again, you're seeing, uh, you can flip to the next one while I'm talking about this, but you're seeing the stepping and we'll see that a little bit more dramatically, I believe, in the next slide. Um, actually you can go to the next slide after this.
Sure.
So, um, we're looking at Commons Drive and Street A, but we'll see, I believe, a turn, a little bit of a turned example, um, one more, please. Sorry, we may take some of, some of these out. There are a lot of elevations of this, of this building. Well, okay, you're looking at right now, kind of, you're looking head on from the school and you can't really tell there's the stepping on the left hand side. Um, but on the right hand side, you have a large outdoor courtyard and I think, keep going, one more, um. Yeah. So this was the, the point that I wanted to make. When you looked at it face on with the elevation, it wasn't as clear. But you'll have, again, the music school in the bottom left, um, you know, lower floor and then retail in the bottom right. And then you have this really big open courtyard. And again, you can see it in the little plan on the left too, how big that green space is right there. Uh, sorry, on the right, how big the green space is right there. And that's what you're seeing above the retail and the music school here. And then you have the stepped back, uh, portion of, of the building. And that's also, um, going to allow for some really nice terraces, um, in a bigger space than you typically have, um, in outdoor areas for a condo. And I think that's going to be, uh, make it a really special product in the Falls Church, um, area market. We can keep going. All right, Evan, I'm turning it back to you. If you're still there.
Great, thank you. So, uh, so in summary, this is to start last slide. I just wanted to hit quickly on some of the public benefits of the project. Um, obviously on the fiscal side, land value payments, ground rent, tax revenue and affordable housing. On the infrastructure side, the Commons is great open space, um, civic spaces and music school, uh, pedestrian friendly multimodal urban grid with great pedestrian streetscape. with great pedestrian streetscape, bike lanes and transportation improvements, public art. And of course, superior environmental sustainability. And so with that, I know this is a long presentation. I apologize for that. It's a lot of buildings and a lot to go through. And so we'd love to answer any questions you all might have. And I look forward to working with you over the next six to, well, six to six years, but certainly the next six months on the SESP process and many years to come on the project itself.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the very thorough presentation. Clearly, you all have spent a lot of time in these past months working to hone and refine the designs. We greatly appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to questions or comments from my colleagues. Does anyone on council have any questions or comments for the developer, his team or city staff?
Dave, there was a slide that Evan skipped that had the changes between the SESP and the SEE. Can we just go back to that real fast and go over those those square footage changes?
Yep, I'm scrolling back.
Yeah, it's slide 11.
Thank you. Should be up in a moment.
There we go. Okay, perfect. So so yeah, so if you want, I can just walk you through this briefly. But the multifamily apartments, we are in the same place, 375, sorry, instead of 375,000 square feet as originally envisioned for apartments, we have 371,000 feet. So we're 4,000 less on apartments, 4,000 more on condo. And the condo was less limited, the condo could have gone up to 275. So the same amount of total residential. The office is the same, the hotel is slightly bigger, 85,000 feet. The retail is about 24,000 square foot more. The grocery is the same as it always has been. And the civic is showing it the same on this chart, but in reality, we have switched. We have gotten rid of the outdoor terrace space. We weren't able to do that because the civic event space is now on the ground floor. And and so the total amount of civic square footage is slightly less now.
You just said the multifamily was a 4,000 square foot difference. It looks like it's 104,000 square foot difference.
I know. So if you look at the total residential, the 550 versus.
Okay, I see, I see.
Yeah, it's the differences in the SEE. We had two separate apartment buildings plus a condo. And now we have one larger apartment building that still has a micro, has the micro units and micro marketing. And then we have the condominium building that got a little bigger.
All right. Other questions, comments?
I can go first, Dave.
Sure, go for it.
Jump on this grenade. Yeah, quite a few things I'd like to go over. So thank you guys for the for the presentation. There's been a lot of really good things, I think, that have come about since the last time that we spoke. But there are also some things that I'm not terribly excited about. But let me start with, I guess, some of the some of the praise and then and then get into some of the the critique here. I I like the precedent images that you guys have for some of the side streets and the alleys. It looks very European centric, and I think that those can be, I think, very cozy and create a really nice outdoor atmosphere. So I commend you on that. And Laurie, the condo building, I think, is absolutely beautiful. I do think it is dramatic, and I can tell you guys are very proud of it because you've got about three times the number of images for the condo building.
Sorry, we're going to cut that down for next time. Sorry about that.
Than you do for anything else. I did have a question with that condo building. I thought it was, it's kind of curious that with the step back kind of dramatic look and the terraces that you have. I mean, those are facing the high school in 66. And maybe it's because I can't get the perspective of that building, looking at the renderings. But what was the thought behind putting some of what I would say is your your best real estate facing the 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 high school in 66? I mean, our football games are exciting, but it just seems, seems an interesting choice. What's the thinking there?
Well, most of your terrace space is going to really be kind of, except for the lowest ones are going to be kind of above and beyond what you're seeing at the high school. And so they're going to have a really beautiful view of kind of the entire area, which again, does have 66, does have big streets, but also has a lot of trees and nice neighborhoods and all of that. And I think that it was our best way to accommodate the height that we needed within the site to make the the project economically viable while still respecting the the boundaries created by the by the high school to give it some more space to to breathe.
Okay. All right. And speaking of the high school, for the movement of the garage in the office building in Phase Two, and I and I'm sure that this could warrant probably an entirely separate meeting, and I know that we've got some folks from the school board. So maybe I'll I'll let you guys just maybe chime in with some bullet points. Was that, does that impact kind of future school growth plans? I assume you guys have been talking extensively with the school board. And then if you guys revisited, I did look at the light and shadow study revisions that you guys provided. And it looks like the placement of that would block a lot of the natural light in the morning over the middle school. And I was wondering if you guys were able to adjust that or or what consideration discussion had taken place in regards to those two things as it relates to moving that that building and taking additional land.
So let me do this. I don't have the shadow studies in this presentation, but we are happy to come back and walk you through that. The changes from the old SEE approved shadow studies to these shadow studies was fairly minimal, even with that 60 foot shift. If you look at them at the hours of the day equal to each other, there there were always shadows on the middle school in the morning because obviously, in the morning, the sun is rising the east and and even the old office building placement was blocking that building. So that is one difference. In the other old shadow studies, we also only had a 10 story building. I believe the new shadow studies are higher. And so that's showing a little bit more shadow, but that would have been the same whether that building was, you know, in the current location or 60 feet shifted over. The high school shadow studies showed quite good, quite frankly. And even on the middle school, you're not really in shadow once you get, you know, midday and all afternoon. So I think those show relatively well, and I'm happy to kind of walk through them as a comparison from the old to the new because there really isn't that much change with that modification. We did immediately meet with the schools when this concept first came up about, it's probably been five, six months ago, and presented this concept to the schools, presented to the city staff and Wyatt first, presented it to the schools and then the school board. And there are some benefits. I think the school liked the, I make it speak for themselves, but at the time, they liked that our residential building is now 40 feet further from the Grove and the Plaza. They liked that it's a garage. They preferred the garage facing the school versus hotel windows. They thought that was just a better use and gave the ability for us to do the art on that building. And then, of course, the trade off is the office building is a little bit closer. And so we did the shadow studies and we also did a feasibility study for the office building for the city to review to make sure from an economic perspective that it still works. And so, yeah, that that is the work we've done to date on that.
Okay. I mean, I would say as 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 long as the school board and the schools are fine with it, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to raise that issue. As it relates to that garage, now that it's being shifted a little bit, the exterior, you guys talked about putting panels up, art that maybe the students will be involved. And I'd also like to see, and and it looks like it may have been designed this way. I'd also like to see some ability in the future to turn part of that into a green wall, to have it landscaped. You know, whether it's landscape that runs up the side. You guys have provided some really nice precedent images in the original SE application from Durham, North Carolina and Albany, New York. And I thought that those were just kind of a beautiful addition and a nice touch.
Yep, thank you for reminding us of that. That's great. Yeah, there is a, there's a landscape planting trip right at the bottom there that that can work for that.
Great. All right. So on the expansion of the footprint that you guys are seeking, you're asking us to give up, it looks like another quarter acre. So what is that? Does that add any additional value? I know we don't have the revised fiscal impact study, but have you guys been able to calculate any additional value to the city for shifting that? Or is it really, we just need to switch things around to make it a little bit easier? Is there an actual monetary benefit to that?
Yeah, so it's, so it's the, so two things. So so it's the, it's the same amount of square footage. So we're not gaining any saleable or rentable square footage that would create additional value. What happens for the city is there is more retail because we have a little bit more ground floors place space now to play with, which will generate long term, better taxes for the city, since retail really does drive, especially restaurants drive a lot of value to the city with sales taxes. So there is some benefit there, but there's no monetary value for that change. It really was, what it came down to was when we started getting our bids from our general contractors back in December, and we've been updating them even through the crisis, just the state of where costs of construction have gone were so much dramatically higher. I'll give you one example, and you know, you're in the real estate industry, so you probably understand, you probably get these numbers more more implicitly. But we know we had estimated roughly $50,000 of space for below grade parking, and it came in at 75. And so just the order of magnitude of below grade structured parking on the site was so beyond anything that we would have feasibly estimated. And and we went through extreme detail trying to figure out how to value engineer it. And ultimately, it just was the item itself that we needed to come up with another solution for in order to bring the project back in line from budget perspective.
Is is there a chance, Evan, because we're, you know, a few years off here, I think, from having to do quite a bit of this. But is there a chance that the market corrects, costs come down, that 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 potentially changes again?
It's a good question. And so so given the process and the time of starting construction, ideally, you know, within the next year to 18 months, we don't really have that luxury. We're already moving forward in design development and construction documents in order to build the project. We do think there's a possibility that costs won't escalate, which is good. But we don't, everything we have heard and everyone we're talking to is that they're likely not going to come down much. They just might stop escalating, which is helpful. But even with that, given COVID and what that's now doing to the impacts on rents and revenues, it's, we're, we're very thankful now that we made this change because we would have had to change it completely if COVID had hit. You know, when once COVID hit, we realized we needed that change regardless.
Okay.
Given where the economic situation is.
Okay. And Cindy, I think if you're the one driving this presentation, if you could just leave it on this slide for me, I'd appreciate it. The civic space that you guys are now incorporating into the office building, I mean, you're calling that civic space. But is that really civic space that's usable by the community? Or is that just really nice conference room space for holiday parties at the office building?
And so it's an event space. It's on the ground floor specifically, so it can be accessed by the community for events, just like we always intended. Whether that's, you know, for example, the music floor talking to is going to do their recitals in that space. Our assumption is we will do a place making oriented events in that space. We hope people will do weddings and parties and the like in that space. And then it can also during the day, Monday through Friday, be used as a conference center as well. So it serves a dual purpose, which the old event space would have done also. But it's now more accessible instead of being up on the second floor, which we think make, we think makes it a little bit more attractive. And then it also creates, you know, what would have been a little bit of dead space along Route seven. It makes it into something attractive and and interesting to look at and to use. And it connects to the Phase Two office building. So, you know, the Phase Two office building has always been a little bit around the corner by having this kind of community centric event space, that's a shared space in in that location directly across from the Phase Two office lobby. It now pulls the Phase Two office building into the project more. And that's another thing that we're just excited about. We think it's the right location.
Okay. Yeah, I would just, I'd I'd love to see some more description of the programming of that.
Sure.
One, because I think it's important. We've got, I think, a high demand for civic space in in the community here for meetings and organizations of 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 all kinds. So I I'd like to just see some details with staff on how that's going to be used, when it's going to be accessed and and who's going to be managing that. So again, Cindy, leave it on this for a second. Evan, was it, was it possible for you guys to pull back or even push forward Street A to align up with Street B and C? I know that there are challenges with grade and with some of the massing on the buildings, but seems to me that it would have benefited the project to have those more aligned, like a perfect intersection, or maybe I'm wrong about that.
Yeah, so we actually have gone the opposite way. We've detached it completely. So that's now, we've now increased the open space in the center by, that's a, that green space in the middle at the end of Street A is hardscape where cars can drive on it. So if we need to use it as a release valve, if there's a big event, tons of cars exiting the garage, we can use it. But it's now meant to be part of the open space to increase our our pedestrian oriented open space. Because that that connection, because of the one way pair streets, the connection from Street A to Street B was never something, you know, since it's not connecting you all the way to Haycock anyway, and since we now have a traffic light allowing you to make a left out on Route seven from Commons, you don't need to get through there anymore. It used to be that that was your route to be able to make a right on Haycock and a left onto seven. But you can now just make a right on Commons, come out to seven and make a left on seven. Or likewise, you can go up to Mustang Alley and make the right and then, you know, make a left or make a left on Mustang Alley.
Okay.
And so we actually got rid of it. We thought it was, it was chopping up the commons too much to have it cut through into smaller spaces. And that, you know, if you were a pedestrian, you were always worrying about cars cutting through the middle. And so this allows us to just have a better open space. It doesn't work because of the dimensions of the hotel, the dimensions of these different buildings and the program we're trying to fit. Specifically, the senior housing and the hotel, just, we were never able to get them to line up. And at some point, we just thought the right thing to do was make those each great spaces where Street B is a clear entrance to one of the garages. Street A is the connection over to Mustang Alley and the high school. And Street Lane two is the connection to the office and the secondary garage. And not try to have them connect because there's nobody from the west side. That's all of the, most of the parking is on the east side of the site. And then the office parking is on the west side of the site. It's very rare that somebody would ever need to cross to get through.
Now that makes sense. I, as a thoughtful response, I appreciate it. I assumed that that was, hoped that that was intentional. Yeah. Speaking of of crossing, one of the things that I know that we had discussed at length, folks on council, when the last time you guys presented was connectivity to to the rest of the West End. And I know that you guys had indicated very clearly and felt strongly that you could not align vehicular traffic with Falls Plaza across the street. And I know that there probably is some future development plan there. There's been some discussions, but in one of the images, and Cindy, you don't need to go to this, but one of the images you guys had shown pedestrian connectivity going really directly from what looked to be Street C across Falls Plaza. But that doesn't exist today. So what's, what was the thinking there?
Yeah, so why don't we go back, Cindy, to slide? One, one second. Slide five?
Sure.
Okay, so when we originally started looking at the site two years ago, you know, we had thought we would do a retail Main Street that ran east west and connected directly over to Federal Realty. Quite frankly, once we understood the grades of the site, we knew that that was never going to work. The retail would just never work, which is why we are where we are. But we have, what we have created is, you can see it on this plan. We started looking at blocking structure to the east of us and how that could connect. So, you know, if Giant were to ever go away, it gives you a developable block that's quite nice. It can be a a large building. You can see it in comparison to our apartment building. On the backside, you can fit a residential building. You could fit open space as a buffer up against the apartments. So you can figure out what that is, that, but that could be a residential building as well. It's deep, it's deep enough. And so this creates a block structure that is, that makes sense for development. And then in the short term, or, you know, really 30, 40 years or so until Giant's lease goes up, it is worth having that conversation with Federal about whether it makes sense to shift their entry to that new location where the traffic light will be. So that they then have a traffic and traffic lit entry into their project. You'd obviously then make a right turn to get to the drive aisle of Giant. So instead of coming in directly in front of the Giant, you would come in a little bit further up the street, but you'd have a traffic light. So it helps their left turn access. You could leave the right in, right out still to where their current drive aisle is today. But that might be worth, we, we had a conversation with staff actually about a week or two ago where Paul raised that question, I think it was Paul or Jim. And so so that's, that's worth having that conversation. I think it would benefit their shopping center.
Yeah, there's, there's two things I'll mention about that. One, and this is for staff and for you guys, and probably as it relates to the grant that's underway right now for improving that intersection. But I think it's really, really, really important for us to make sure that we have very clear, safe crossings across Haycock. Because the way that you guys have have built this, and smartly so, is that you're funneling traffic from Womata, from Virginia Tech, and from both of our schools through your project. And the natural walking path for all of our kids, my kids included, are going to be across Haycock. And whether it's the, whether it's the raised walkways, it's the hawk signals. If it's at some point, people want to pony up and put a pedestrian bridge across it. I I just, I get very concerned. I haven't seen a traffic study for this development, I don't think, or I don't recall. Have you, I assume you guys have done one for this.
We have.
Okay, so I know that I, you know, I know with with what you're planning on building, I think that that's going to, you know, create different kinds of traffic challenges. But I want to make sure that our students and our residents and other folks that are visiting those sites and making their way down through Falls Church have got very, very safe, direct crossings there.
Yep.
I cannot reiterate that enough because I looked at it and I thought, this is great. But man, when school lets out, as kids funnel through there, more of them are going to want to walk and mosey through that project, and rightly so. But to get through and to get home, it's going to be important as we continue to. It's going to be important as we continue to create a walkable.
Agreed. And one thing we changed Ross from our last SCE submission is we used to have a traffic light at the first intersection. Where the grocery store entrances and then a hawk signal at Mustang Alley. We've now changed both of those to full traffic lights with full pedestrian crossings. So students will be able to cross in either location to get.
Good. Okay. That's good to know.
For it are safely.
All right. Since we're on Haycock. Did you say ten thousand square foot daycare center?
Yes.
Why?
So it's, you know, it's interesting. When you, when you build a project of this sort with such a mix of uses, residential apartments, office, retail. You know, we, what we will have on site without the daycare is middle school, high school. Micro units for kids right out of college, senior housing condos, renty nesters. We literally have like every part of the spectrum. And what we are missing and what there is a need for in the market, given our conversations is daycare. And so there's some higher end daycare providers that we think would be a really nice benefit to the site. They, they work nicely with senior housing as well. Because there's co-programming that you might, that's many of them do kind of intergenerational work where, you know, once a week they might go visit the senior housing building. They get the benefit of obviously their own space, but then. You know, during the day when the commons in the morning, you know, before the sun is so bright on the commons, it gives the, it gives some added usage where you can take some of the kids over to the common spaces as well. We think it adds a lot of life and vitality to the project. Obviously, it's on top of the base retail that's in the tax analysis that you've all done. So even though daycare doesn't provide the same excitement from a tax perspective. We're going, we're creating more retail here than we were originally going to create anyway. And we think it's a really good use for that side of the project. And there's not, we don't think there's much, there's traditional retail that we can create in that space that will be successful in that location. But we do think we can create daycare and what it allows is that entire facade to feel alive between the grocery and the daycare space going up to the open space.
All right. Well, maybe, maybe I'm not. I don't have the creative mind. Some people do, but it just did not really. I don't know. It didn't evoke. Kind of progressive, modern development when you threw that out there. But again, that's not my area of expertise in real estate. I get it with the co-planning piece that, that makes sense, but maybe some other folks have comments, but that really caught me by surprise, but. Maybe that'll work out better than I think it would. All right. So just a couple of the things, the office building. I was looking at these precedent images and not the precedent images, the actual designs themselves. I was really disappointed by the design of the office building, Laura, and I know that. That's really in, in, in kind of your corner. But it just really, you look at the, you look at the condo building, you look at the different designs and aesthetics of the apartment building. The thoughtfulness behind some of the precedent images with the walkthrough streets and then you get to the office building and I got to tell you, just reminding me about days of working on K Street or near K Street. It just looked kind of staid. It looked your, your kind of standard, run of the mill. Kind of office building that we would see downtown. And I was just hoping for something that was a little more modern, a little more progressive, maybe even something that incorporated like mass timber or had like wood accents. But it just, it looked really kind of. Just kind of standard for me. So I don't know if that's a final design image, but I was, and again, maybe I'm just not capturing the full creativity of it. But I was just a little disappointed in the design and the aesthetics of, of, of that office building. So. I'm not asking you guys to defend it. I'm just giving you my kind of unfiltered, unfiltered thoughts on it.
We appreciate your comments on that. And I think that there are some great detail opportunities, like the glass piece that kind of pushes out towards the comments. I know you guys are trying to find the right image, but also the metal that kind of wraps the side and. Covers the, the outdoor area on the roof. And we think there's some visual interest at the, at the, at the entrance. So I do understand, I mean, you're looking at something that's precast versus a mass timber kind of building. We did actually look into that. It's just not a financially viable option, especially in this area yet. It's just very limited subs and opportunities for, for that. But I think we can continue this conversation maybe outside of, outside of this, this meeting, but we appreciate your comments.
Yeah, I would just with, I just feel like it'll, it'll stick out like a sore thumb compared to. You know, everything that you guys are putting into this project and some of the other areas. And then the last thing I'll say is that Evan, your, your passing comment on that grocery store and the green and gray. Has got folks wheels turning and spinning. Exactly who that is. I've got, I've got my, my lead dog in terms of who I think is based on that comment, but I won't share it right now, but are you, are you guys ready to share who that is?
So not quite yet. So what I'd say is we have a, we have a signed letter in temp with the grocer at this point. We are negotiating a lease. So it's a real deal, which we're excited about. And we will obviously share with the community once we can. They are, we are under a very strict NDA. And so to the extent there is a very small number of people at the city. That want to sign the NDA and understand who the grocer is sooner. We, they are willing to do that and a very small number of people. They don't, other than that. Unfortunately, we can't share who it is quite yet.
Okay.
But we're excited about it.
What's your timing on that? You know?
On being able to share it? Well, we probably, once the lease is executed, which would be that sometime this fall, we can probably share it with a larger number of council members. I don't think they will share it publicly till next spring, maybe even. Probably maybe even towards the summer when we break ground. That's just who they are as a company. But we can bring more people into the tent once the lease is signed.
Okay. And then, sorry, I did have two additional questions I was remiss in asking. The green roofs that you guys have, are, are those just green roofs or the actual usable amenities?
It's a mix depending on the building. So we, one of the benefits, and obviously we couldn't go into all the detail on the project, but we do have more green roof. In the SESP submission than we had agreed to in the SCE. And so if you look at these three D images, yeah, that's Cindy, any of those white box. Renderings are good on slides. Let's see, just give me one second. Slides. Slide fifteen is a good one.
Fifteen, okay.
So. So we have covered as much as possible of, of the. Green of the roof spaces with green. And this was a big conversation at the SCE. We were nervous to commit to too much until we got as far along as we could. But you can see all at the very high levels, almost all these roofs are green. Those are green roofs, meaning kind of. Green roofs really for stormwater management purposes. Within the courtyards of the residential apartment building and the condo building, lower level courtyard spaces. There is true green roof that's also got trees and planters and is habitable green space as well. So it's a combination of the two, all of which contribute to our stormwater management plan.
Okay. And then another two, two final questions on environmental. I know there've been some concern about the size of the tree pits. For getting the mature trees that we want out of this project. Have you guys addressed that?
So let me ask, I don't know if Karen, is anybody from Walter Phillips on the phone?
Yep, Karen White's here.
There we go. Thanks, Karen.
We've, we've had some initial talks with staff, like some initial comment and reviews with staff on the tree pits. I don't think we've. I don't think we've seen any, I don't think they've had any issues with what we're providing at this point, but we're happy to, you know, continue to talk about it. We are meeting on. Haycock and Route seven, we are meeting the, the standard requirements of the streetscape design.
Okay. I, I serve as liaison to the Urban Forestry Commission. I know that there'd been some comments that have been passed along about concern that those. The tree pits, either the spacing or the size wouldn't accommodate the types of mature trees that we were hoping to get out of the project. If you guys have addressed that or you're talking with staff, I'd certainly like to know that everybody feels good about that.
Yeah. And one thing we did, we had a meeting with staff about a week or two ago, we went through the project. And some of the feedback we did get, which was very helpful was along Leesburg Pike and Haycock. The desire to have a longer continuous tree pit to stop people from crossing middle of the street. And so you're kind of, you're seeing it actually in this rendering along Leesburg Pike, actually where. It's, it's actually ends up being very good for the trees and that you have these longer continuous tree pits in that zone. And so we're happy about that. Typically you would break them up either every tree or every three trees by city, city code.
Okay. All right. Great. All right. I'll leave it there and let some other folks ask some questions. So thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to some other questions and also keep in mind, we do have several other items on the agenda and a closed session tonight. So. Folks, keep that in mind, please. But who else has got questions or comments?
Mayor, I do.
All right, Ms. Hardy?
So Ross had several of mine already. So that's good because normally I have the long question asker. So starting with things that I do like, I do appreciate having that you and team have tried to balance the architecture. Feedback we've given in the past, so more modern kind of in the interior and the more the traditional brick. I would say keep up with the modern. I'm a big fan of the modern and I think that's an appropriate place to, to do it here. I do share Ross's concern that the office frankly just wasn't that exciting compared to previous versions that we've seen. So. To the extent that we can work on that, that'd be good. On the construction pricing, so I hear what you said, that things are expensive right now, but given that construction won't start till the future. If there is upside on this for you, what are the opportunities that the city can share in the upside with you? So things improve, which I think, you know, we've been in a good spirit of cooperation in this whole development.
Let, let's, let us, let us formulate our thoughts on that because I think we're still thinking through the whole project as a whole. And have a conversation about the economics of it in general, because I just, I'm just not prepared to answer that question tonight.
Okay. Just something for us to think about because I think I understand the uncertainty. Clearly there's a lot that we're all trying to plan for. But I think in the spirit that we've kind of embarked on this together, I think it'd be great for us to think about how we can share and hopefully. If the environment changes for the better too.
Yeah, I just, I do want to add one comment there. Let it, this is Robin from, from Hoffman. You know, like Evan said, we're not necessarily prepared to answer that exact question, but I do feel. The need to sort of remind everyone that there are incredible headwinds that we are facing with this project. So. I think we just have to all manage our expectations in terms of. Upside and really need to be focused on just general viability right now.
Okay. So it probably dovetails to my next question, which is I think one of the VC changes you're requesting, which is, I think. Wanting to not be held, holding that last block of residential permits until hotel and.
Yeah.
Office is built. I assume that's kind of in the same, trying to respond to the current economic conditions.
Yeah, that it's actually more, more than that. In the old plan, our. Our smaller apartment building was a separate building from the larger apartment building. So the construction sequencing and phasing of the project had that building coming later. And so it wasn't a big deal for that building to be held off from a permit perspective or a CVO perspective until the other buildings happened. Now that the apartments are all in the, the main building and that building has the grocery and really needs to deliver on a specific time schedule. It's our kind of one anchor tenant at this point. That makes it, it makes it harder to, to achieve that basically. And then of course, given the economic situation, our hope is to finance this entire project at once. But given where COVID is, you know, hotels are at twenty percent occupancy right now. So how do you finance a hotel? We just don't know. So, so that could impact that as well.
Yeah. So again, trying to be understanding, but I know one of the big appeals with. The way you all laid this out is actually having so many uses delivered at once and really making this come alive. So we know that that's important to you guys too. So it's important to us. So I'm slightly uncomfortable with that VC change as it stands, as you can probably imagine.
Yep, I agree.
On the two school thoughts, so with the shifting sixty feet, I have the same concerns around kind of what does that do to MEH? And the condo balconies that now face the schools, I won't speak for the school board, but I would want to hear what their input is on those two changes. In the past, I think they were concerned that, you know, hotel balconies be facing, I don't know how they feel about condo balconies facing the high school and then what the massing does to MEH now. So just note those. And I guess the question for staff is, you know, I'd like to know what the school board's feedback was. And then while we're on massing, moving on to the multifamily building. Evan, you had done such a nice job before talking about that kind of woo nerf that split the building that I really miss it. The building frankly is just really big. And I know you've tried to do that with some architecture, but I wonder if there's further ways to really break it up or if. You can still create some sort of passive way through the building in some way. Because it just feels like a very long block, both from a pedestrian, if you're standing on the corner of Broad and Haycock. Walking either direction just feels very big. So I wonder if that could be broken up into more manageable size, both from architecture as well as the pedestrian experience.
So I mean, I'll be honest, I don't think we can break it up from a physical perspective, just because the way, if you look at the building, it's a. It's a perfect figure eight. It's the most efficient building you can get for a multifamily building. We can definitely do things architecturally and landscape wise and retail wise and given the grades, we've tried to play with that as well. And you're right, we've, we've kind of shifted the one earth instead of being there, it's now between the office and the hotel. Which I think will end up being a more pedestrian oriented space will be used more often. So I totally understand why this is a main difference from where we were before. And, you know, but we're happy to study it architecturally. I, I don't see us opening it up for, I don't see. Right now, because of the grocery loading requirement, all of that space is grocery loading under there. So it just wouldn't be as attract, once we got the real grocery loading requirements. It just would not be an attractive space for people to walk through. So we ended up, that's why we ended up closing it. In our last version, we had it open to the sky even, as you could walk through, but it's sixty percent loading under there. And so it just would not be an environment where you'd really want to be walking. So that's why we decided let's just. Make it smell better and feel better and close it with gates and make it so that the loading is completely hidden. But we can also sit down and walk you or staff through that and walk through the building in more detail. So you can see how the plans hold together. But I understand, I understand where your, where your feedback is from.
Yep. And I think from the pedestrian experience, if you're kind of at the corner of the grocery store, not only you're walking kind of uphill, but it's a really long block until you get to the commons. So I wonder if design wise, what we can do to make that experience better.
Yeah, there we have some ideas from a place making perspective that I can start developing and sharing with you guys that can make that more attractive.
So moving on to the commons, I know that you said the entrance will change a bit pending our discussions on what to do facing Chestnut, but is the size of the commons changing? Has it, it feels smaller, but I don't know whether that's actually true or not.
So if we're able to get this new intersection design approved, which I hope we will, you'll see more, will regain. The stormwater management and open space that we have lost. So, so with this design, the way we've currently drawn, currently drawn it because of the angle, we did lose. A good amount of the southern part of the commons, which had always been the stormwater management zone anyway. But we did lose that. In the new version of the plan, we gained back a good, however many thousand square feet. And it will be much more attractive and we'll have more stormwater management. So. And then that would be very, very close, if not the same to where we were comments wise in the past. Yeah.
And then my last comment is around, question for staff or you Evan, is around the additional B one uses that you're requesting. So besides daycare, what were the other uses that we need to approve?
So the other, I know of, I know one of them, I have to admit, I don't remember all of them off the top of my head. One of them was, there are some really interesting pet stores that then often will also have onboard kenneling, like doggy daycare or something like that. Which are becoming sought after tenants in urban areas. So kennel specifically is not allowed in this zone. And our thought is not to do a full on kennel, but you may have a kind of a pet store slash, not selling pets, but. It's kind of a, you can buy pets goods, it's a doggy daycare. And then they sometimes offer overnight kenneling for some of their animals. And they're popping up all over DC and all over urban environments. They, you know, these buildings will likely have a lot of. Pet owners within them or dog owners. So having that amenity on site is, is important to them. But anyway, so that's one. I don't recall what the other ones were off the top of my head, but the big two were daycare and kennel. Carly, I don't know if you have that list handed.
Yeah, I would add probably the other ones were bowling and radio station.
And also I was going to say, this is Amy Friedlander from EY. We were also looking at, you know, ensuring that the uses that we want. To be in the site, which we think that will contribute to the vibrancy of the retail would be allowed on the site. So other things that we, we mentioned in the statement of justification include a brewery, winery, distillery. Spa, med spa, hair salon. And mobile food service. So really just making sure that the approvals reflect what we intend to have on the site.
And so I know, I think Evan, I heard you say that daycare would be in terms of counting the retail square footage, this was on top of what we originally committed. So this is just gravy.
Yeah.
Would the other requested B one uses be in addition to as well, or is it in replacement of previous uses?
Some of them, so it really depends on what it is, right? So. We don't expect there to be a bowling alley here, but to some extent, if we get. A really excited bowling tenant that wants to be on the second floor of an office building. Then that would obviously be in addition to, because it's on top of, on the second level. If we were to get the kennel space is, is not a big space, the doggy daycare. So that would be a typical retail space. So some of them are, some of them aren't. The daycare specifically was one, you know, we knew that there might be heartburn over that. And so that's why. We felt comfortable asking for it because it's above the square footage. But yeah, the other uses were more just as Regency was thinking through its typical retail mix, those are the types of tenants they're starting to see pop up in their urban. those are the types of tenants they're starting to see pop up in their urban environments. And they just wanted to make sure that we had the ability to do some of them. And we're happy to work with you on the VCs to make sure that, you know, if there's ways that you want to define it so that it's not just, you know, a big old kennel that's dead all day, but has dogs at night, like we can work with you to come up with the right language for that.
Yep. Yeah. I mean, I think it's clearly, we wouldn't want like a giant bowling alley to take up all the retail space. But if it's a punch bowl social, like it's in Boston quarter, I think, you know, combination restaurant, bowling games could be really fun, although it wouldn't really work in the current COVID environment. Um, but so I think clearly which is depends, I just want to make sure that we're clear on if we do approve these additional uses, you guys don't take that and use all the retail square footage for that.
That's great feedback, and I think our heads are probably very similar to where yours are. So that could be something we do through the VCs.
Great. Um, and I'm actually a fan of daycare, so not necessarily from a fiscal, but clearly it's a community need. As our community grows, I think we need to think about providing care across the entire spectrum. So I think that's actually fine with me as, as is pet stores, but one.
In these buildings, in the apartment buildings, there's, we don't expect there to be a lot of school kids, but people do often have their first child while they're still living in an apartment building. So having that daycare amenity right there is fantastic for young families. And then typically they move out, you know, to a house by the time the kid is getting to school.
Yep. Uh, and one of the things that you're, you've heard in the past from our Wreckin Parks Board that you're probably here again, especially if you propose daycare, is active recreation space. So the closest playground is going to be West End Park, which is probably several blocks down. And so one of the concerns will be that, gosh, where will all these little toddlers go and play?
Right.
From this daycare set.
So we created, there's a dedicated open space right north of the daycare center that would be a place space for the kids. Um, it's, um, it's on Haycock. Uh, if we, you saw how the building got pulled back from the garage and that created an open space at the ground level that we can use for that. Um, so that's where that would go. So they would have a attached dedicated place space for the kids that's outdoors. Um, and then of course, on nice days, they can also walk to the commons, but they would have their own space for that.
Would that be open to the public after hours?
That's a great question. So we, I can't guarantee that until we know who the daycare provider is, but we will certainly push to have the daycare provider allow it to be open evenings and weekends. We'll just have to see who the daycare provider is. It's designed in a way where it could easily be open. Um, and it just will depend on who that tenant is, if they're willing to share the equipment. Obviously during COVID, they wouldn't because they don't have to clean it all the time, but, um, yeah, that, that's something we'd be asking for.
Yeah. I think that would be responsive to what we've heard consistently from Wreckin Parks is that they think the space needs more active recreation for little kids. So I think that would be great. Uh, so I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Duncan, go for it.
All right, I'll be quick and Evan, you can be even quicker. So if we're going to call it West Falls, which I strongly endorse, love that name. Is there a place where water is falling and you can't count the splash park?
There is.
One of a waterfall.
That's a great question. So there, you know, we haven't gotten all the way through our placemaking concepts, but one of the ideas is for stormwater management to be part of our placemaking, uh, very visually throughout the site. Um, we actually will have a, one of the mural ideas we have is a mural that teaches what stormwater management is and why it's important. Um, that people can kind of learn, but would also be beautiful art. And so we've had this concept on one of the kiosk buildings of having stormwater management that is collected, then kind of go off as kind of a piece of artwork that then lands into a stormwater management pond, so that people can visually see what that stormwater management is as well. So there, that, there could be some falling water, um, as part of the placemaking plan.
Okay, that's great. I endorse falling water. Second, on traffic, and maybe this comes next week because I don't want a big detailed explanation. But I think folks, uh, just generally would like to know what the performance level of the intersections around this whole development is projected to be compared to, you know, what it is now at the, you know, very few intersections that we have here. You're increasing the number of, uh, intersections, which is good because that, you know, tends to spread traffic out some. But, uh, you know, just to be able to answer, particularly if there's any difference in the performance of the traffic movement because the parking is above grade as opposed to below grade, or if there's no difference, it's better, hopefully it's not worse. Uh, but if you can just give us the index card version of that next week, it would help us answer questions from people who said, not even so much for this project, but for other projects being discussed, like, oh my God, but we can't do anything until we figure out what the West End is going to perform at. So.
Okay. Just we'll create a one pager, um, our traffic engineer is working on it, the traffic impact study and submission to VDOT. So we have that information and we can, uh, share that next week.
Yeah, and good work on, you know, that intersection, uh, with Chestnut, which of course has gone back and forth. And it's, uh, you know, and, and simpler times, that would have been the biggest hurdle you faced instead of trying to design a project into the teeth of, you know, a once every hundred year global pandemic.
Yes, it's been fun.
Yeah, it's been fun. Uh, the other short thought on the daycare, I mean, as a parent who raised both of, uh, our children, uh, at the corner of 20th and M Street, uh, in the basement of the KPMG building, uh, at the daycare center there, uh, yeah, I strongly endorse, uh, daycare in this sort of more urban environment for all the reasons that you said. And, uh, you know, our kids had a great experience there. They got out to the urban parks and sort of learned how to live in the big city at a very young age, really.
Yeah.
It definitely can work and it's definitely a real, uh, plus amenity for offices and apartment dwellers, as you said. And, uh, even though I'm not a dog person, I'm a cat person, the doggy daycare thing is now the, the new version of that. And there are some people that have to, uh, like to be well taken care of during the day. So I think those are two amenities that actually, uh, will make it easier for people to attract the office tenants and, uh, and apartment tenants too. So I would encourage you to keep going down that track. I think that's my half say for now. Thanks.
All right, um, Mr. Snyder, did you have any comments or questions?
Sure, um, I'd like to focus on the fiscal aspects of this. By the way, this is a question for city staff. When will we get the updated, uh, financial, um, aspects of this?
Um, I'm aiming to have it by next Monday's meeting for referral.
Could I have it before that? It seems to me that the financials are pretty important. And if you're telling me we're not going to get them until the day of the meeting, I have to say that's pretty unsatisfactory, both for us and the community. So when in advance of Monday, next Monday, do we expect to get a financial read? And I'm going to then run through a series of contingencies that I'd like to see costed out. So maybe this is a question for the city manager, when are we going to see the numbers underlying this? Because after all, we're really about this in order to help pay for the school.
Um, Councilmember Snyder, the, um, the program is very similar as, as was described in the staff report to what was approved at S E E. So the fiscal impact numbers are being refined, but I don't think they'll be substantially different than what, uh, council saw at S E E.
Right. Now, now you're assuming full buildout of the office, hotel, and we've just been told repeatedly by the commercial element of this about all these headwinds. So I would like some contingency numbers worked out. What if, for example, as the request is, we approve and move forward on all the apartments with the grocery store, but all the commercial components are not built? What is the payment then? How soon do we expect payment and what will that be? Assuming these headwinds don't go away. So what I'm trying to do is get a realistic read here of what we can expect and when we can expect it in terms of the finances. We've already heard that all the commercial components by and large, with few exceptions, are subject to not happening. We know the request is there to break the tie between the commercial components and the apartments, which we now, we're going to get the full buildout, including the additional hundred thousand. So what I'm interested in is for us in the community to be looking at the realistic numbers that we're likely to see and when are we going to see them, uh, in different sorts of analysis. So that's point number one, and it seems to me, again, it's pretty critical. It's especially critical because we're about, as I said, funding the school here with this project in large measure. Second point I want to make is we've already contributed $15 million in transportation grant funds to this project, allowed the developer to use that money to plan. If all that does is support a giant apartment building and a grocery store, it seems to me that won't be a good use. Now, I'm hoping, and I have no doubt the developers are hoping, that we'll actually build a lot of these pictures that we see tonight. But we've also been told repeatedly, big headwinds may not happen. So it seems to me, for the benefit of the community, we need a realistic look at what we're likely to see and when we're going to see it in terms of the finances. So how soon are we going to get those numbers, assuming certain contingencies? Um, uh, so that we in the community can look at where we're actually going to be financially and when we're going to be there.
So as, as was noted, the fiscal impact analysis will be done as, as part of the packet for, uh, for next week. I think those numbers, as they will be presented, are in compliance with the comprehensive agreement and with the, uh, the way that all these things are linked. And so for us to now start to work through different scenarios, I think it, you know, we certainly will not have that on, um, Monday night, and I think probably before we do that exercise, because the whole premise of this and our agreements is, is, uh, Mr. Goldman noted, was, was the big bang. You know, phase one, all comes together. That is still the commitment. And, um, and so I think the point is well taken, and, and I understand exactly what the point is. But I also think, you know, we have an understanding of how this is going to proceed and there's been no change to that. So, um, I, I don't think we should necessarily run a lot of different scenarios yet. Um, and, and possibly ever, um, because it is our expectation, uh, uh, our expectation that these things will all proceed together.
So if it's true that it will all proceed together, then why would be, why are we being asked to delink the commercial from the residential?
So that's a specific ask relating to building permits. Um, and that is, you know, there are other provisions in the comprehensive agreement that link these things together. Um, I could have, um, the development team speak to that in terms of the specifics of what they're thinking is on those, on that timing. We haven't accepted that point. We have acknowledged that that's a request. Um, but, um, we have not, you know, I think we need to understand a little bit more about what, there might be some, some more detailed issues about specifics of timing, not a sort of a global delinking. Let me see, the development team wants to speak to that.
I, I can speak to that, or Evan can. Uh, this is Ron Betterell again from Hoffman. The, to be clear, the main, um, driver of that particular request, which is Wyatt, um, stated is specific to building permits, is simply that we combined the two, uh, apartment buildings together in this new plan. So it's one larger, um, building with micro units and regular units combined together. And that was largely for both, um, construction efficiencies, but also operational efficiencies. Um, and that's really the driver of that ask. That is not, the driver of that ask was not so that we can go ahead and build all the residential without building the commercial uses.
That's right.
So I just want to be really clear about what drove that particular nuance of ask. It's, we need to build, obviously, since it's one building, we need to build it all at the same time. Uh, whereas previously the block C building, um, just from a construction sequencing standpoint, was going to be delayed behind the rest of the buildings.
That's right.
And I do want to just make a quick comment, um, because I think your point is, is well taken, um, Mr. Snyder, in terms of the reality that we are all facing. But, um, I just do want to quickly comment that, um, despite this incredible, um, anomaly that we're all going through at the moment, um, in terms of the just macro environment in general, both economic, social, um, public health, et cetera, you know, we are working extremely hard and diligently behind the scenes to deliver on the project in the way that we originally envisioned it. Um, that is going to require, I think, some additional flexibilities, um, than what we previously, uh, had worked out with the city. And so we will, you know, want to talk more about those. Um, but the intent as Wyatt said is still to deliver the project, um, holistically. So, you know, we may need to get more creative in how we do that, um, but that is still our, uh, goal.
Um, okay, okay. Um, so I, I, I just want to reiterate, I'm trying to figure out exactly where we are financially with this project, and frankly, at this point, I don't know. Um, and I understand that that may be conditions beyond anyone's control and the, whatever the intent is now. But, um, I, I just, I really, I don't have numbers in front of me. I have an assertion from the city manager, oh, it'll be the same. And yet I hear the developer saying, hey, things have changed. Well, that's right. I can observe that as well. So I'm just trying to figure out, where are we financially on this project? When are we going to be paid? What will it be? And what are, what's the likelihood, uh, of, of the, the money to the city, uh, under what circumstances? Uh, and what are we really dealing with here? So that's my, my principal concern.
Yeah, it's well stated.
And I think Wyatt's main point is that, you know, programmatically, if we are able to deliver the site exactly as you're seeing it in tonight's presentation, that, um, nothing really has changed. Um, obviously the realities, uh, of the day are going to affect that, but none of us really know the answer to that yet. So I think Wyatt's point was simply, should the project deliver in exactly the form you're seeing it tonight? Um, the fiscal impact is expected to be largely the same. Um, however, we all need to prepare and brace ourselves, um, for potential changes as this current situation unfolds.
Right.
Okay, I've made my request. Thank you.
Other, other.
I do have some questions as well.
Yes, Vice Mayor Connolly.
I just, I, first thing, um, Evan, when you mentioned right away that the one R was missing, I was very sad because that's my new favorite word that I learned from you. But so I'm glad to see there are other one R still in the program.
There are, there are.
Yes. Um, all right. My question is mostly about the change to the school parking area, the trapezoid area. Um, when we did the land swap with the schools, the trapezoid area is school property at this point. Is that correct, Mr. Shield? Okay. So does that mean you're going to have to do a second ground lease with the schools?
So we would have to do a re-subdivision at some point, um, in order to modify the school boundary and the economic development parcel boundary. And I believe Wyatt wants to do that in conjunction with the SESP approval, uh, later this year.
Okay. So when you presented to the school board, you presented all that to, and Mr. Anderson is here, so maybe he can answer. Dr. Noonan, he'd be, so that was all presented to the school board and they were agreeable to that?
I'll, I'll let them speak for themselves, but the feedback we got from, uh, Dr. Noonan was that they were agreeable to it.
Okay. So before they answer, my other question is just the timing. So when we turn, when the school is turned over to you this next year, that one of the first things that was going to happen was the demolition of the school and the building of that parking lot, that trapezoid parking lot. Is that still going to happen first?
Yeah. So the, so the first thing would be abatement, um, you know, to make, make sure that the school is clean, followed by demolition. Uh, then the school would build their parking lot. This, it doesn't impact their phase one, their current design for the parking lot. It only impacts it when we go to build phase two, five years from now, you know, whatever that may be.
Right.
So the current design does not change.
Okay. So then at, so at the time that if that does indeed happen and an office building goes in there, then where will all the school parking go? Into garage B3?
Exactly. Right.
Okay.
Uh, uh, well, no, B3 or the garage that gets built would be four.
Oh, so the, okay, okay. And then, so now let's ask Mr. Anderson or Dr. Noonan, the school board's thoughts on this one.
So, uh, if I might speak for a moment, this is, uh, Greg Anderson. Um, so clearly the board is looking forward to, uh, to the conversation, uh, next, uh, next week as well. But, um, you know, we've, we've certainly seen the, uh, the SESP as it stands right now. I can't speak on behalf of the full board, but I can certainly say this question of the land transfer and this question of the parking and in particular, um, where the parking, you know, what sort of guarantees are needed in order to be able to make the parking work out is a topic that's, uh, that's certainly on our minds. Um, I was, I'll, I'll riff a little bit on, uh, Mr. Litten, Littenhouse's earlier comments about. I was, I'll riff a little bit on Mr. Littenhouse's earlier comments about the artwork on the sides of the garage, and say that that one certainly resonates with me. I think that's a great idea, to be able to do that sort of placemaking art as well. And certainly, the conversations about that will be something I'll be looking forward to. So, Dr. Noonan, I don't know if you want to add anything else to that?
I don't have a whole lot to ask, just to maybe put a finer point on it. We've had some good collaborative conversations, I think, with Evan and his team, and we are working on a final parking memorandum of understanding, because when that parking is ultimately taken, we've got to figure out where our, where our staff and students are going to park. So I think that in the abstract, we are somewhat comfortable from the board's perspective of looking at that additional 0.25 acres. But there are a couple of things we need to sort of clear up first, to sort of make it all work. And the first is the MOU, and then just some further conversations that we've already engaged in. So thank you.
Thank you. So Evan, does that, or Wyatt or Carol, does that additional acreage that's going to Gateway Partners increase the lease payments that we're receiving?
The, the request is to consider this additional space for phase two. There is no change to the lease payments. And the land area is still below the 30%, which is what we went to market with to offer that land, you know, per the agreement with Fairfax County. It's still within those bounds. And the problem that is trying to be solved here is to keep the program intact, but to reduce some of the cost of the parking specifically. And the consequence of that is moving that phase two office, that quarter of an acre, more or less, further west. So, so that's a quick summary of it. We do have a closed session at the end of this, just to talk about the, talk about that question, and to get a little bit of an independent view of that. And so I'll reserve any further comments for that. But what's on the table is not any change to the comprehensive agreement.
Okay. And then what about the legal requirements of where that boundary is? Because I know we did a, there was a legal land swap.
Yes.
Which also happened, there would be a change to the land swap boundary, I think, is what Evan just said.
Yeah, we would do a change to the subdivision ordinance, and we would need to record a new plat. And so that's the process that, you know, those are the steps in the process of changing the subdivision and granting an easement to the schools for the use as parking until phase two occurs, and working through those details.
Okay. And then in the same vein, we spent a lot of time back at the SCE, and as this has evolved, talking about school pickup and drop off, and how that would or would not work with different things. Have the schools had a chance to look at this new grid to decide that it would work for school pickup and drop off?
Dr. Noonan, do you want to answer that, or do you want me to?
I'm happy to. We have had a chance to look at the street grid, and we continue to have conversations with Evan regarding a turnaround up at the end of Street A, as it comes through ultimately the school parking lot. And there are a couple of conversations we've been having with respect to making, making that as soft a turn from the right-hand side as you come down Lane Four, turning in, and then, or up Lane A, or Street A. So yes, we've had, we've had good conversations with them about whether or not even Street A would be a through street, whether or not there would be a barrier, ballers, or some sort of arm as well. But that's a long way of saying yes. Yes, Vice Mayor Connolly, we've had some good conversations with them. Thank you.
Okay, that's good. And then Evan, on the voluntary concessions, somewhere it talks about School Road, which I think is now Mustang Alley. You have Mustang Alley in part of it, and it says School Road someplace else. So within those VCs, you should fix it so it says Mustang Alley all the way through, because the School Road doesn't exist, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And then last question related to the daycare center, which I think is a great idea. Mr. Shields, when we built, when the Kensington went in, there was a special tax structure that had to go in, because it was a different kind of use. Do we, what's the tax structure for a daycare center? Is that different because it's a school?
So that's going to be one of the things that will go into the fiscal impact model in terms of how daycare centers are taxed, and I don't have the answer to that right off the tip of my tongue. I think that daycare area is, though, part of the increase in the retail square footage. Is that correct, Evan?
Yes.
So basically, so we just, that's going to be one of the things that's in the fiscal impact model.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I don't know that there are any special conditions about a daycare. I think they're, they're taxed just like everything else on, you know, in terms of, well, I don't, I don't know all the taxes they pay, so we've got to have factored that into the model.
I just would want to make sure that if it's, if it's retail space, it is a similar structure, so that we'll get, we'll get the same amount of tax out of that as we would if there was something else in that space.
I think probably it'd be comparable to other service uses for which we do not get sales taxes.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, let me open it up to Mr. Anderson or Dr. Noonan. Do either of you have any additional comments you want to make?
I'll just go forward for a second. Thank you, Mayor Tarter. And just say again, we're looking forward to the meeting again next week, when this comes to us officially on the board. You know, I myself have my own personal comments on the architecture and things like that, which I'll, which I'll reserve for later. But I do appreciate, do appreciate all of the info that we received tonight and the opportunity to listen in and participate. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So unless you have any additional comments, Dr. Noonan, I'll go ahead and give my comments. Does you have anything, Dr. Noonan, that you wanted to add?
Mayor Tarter, I'd certainly yield, yield my time to you, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure after you hear me, you won't, you'll, I still want to do that. But let me just give you a few comments, Evan and company. One, with respect to the question that was raised about building permits on the office, you know, with respect to apartments and the like. If this is some kind of technical issue, then I think it's one thing. If it's kind of a first step in not having an office, or the possibility of not having office, then that would be a real problem for me. To me, your project, your proposal was something that people chose because it had a mix of uses, that it wasn't just an apartment-heavy proposal, but actually had a broad range of uses. And so anything that would diminish that, to me, would be of serious concern. And so, again, my hope is that this question about the change, requested change about the building permits, has more to do with the form of your building than it does to wanting to move away from the commitment to make, to have office. So that would be my hope. Moving on to some other comments that I have, and I had to step away for a moment, and so my apologies if this is something that's been answered, but the, the area, Street B and Street C and the garage kind of jutting out into that, that area, I don't like the idea of having sort of two ways to get through that, one for handicap folks or mobility-impaired folks, and the other for the rest of the world. I really think we need to try real hard, you know, as a city, as a culture, to move everybody in the same way, and whether that's a people mover or what, I don't know. But it seems to me that going through the garage for people who are handicapped seems like a kind of a second grade movement. And so I would encourage you to, to consider ways to try to, to make, you know, one path accessible to all. I know it's a challenge. I get the grade issue entirely. But I would just, again, try to encourage you, going through garages tends not to be real nice ways to get through things. And it appeared to me that that's how someone who had accessibility issues would have to navigate those areas. And so, again, to the extent you're able to, to give some additional consideration of that, I would, I would encourage you to do so.
Okay.
The garage sort of jutting out to that D2, I guess, garage, just seems weird from an urban planning standpoint, and, you know, I don't know what the solution is to it, but it just seems really weird and kind of jarring to me as far as the design of these different elements. I don't know if there's anything to do to kind of square it up with D1 and D3, but it just seems very awkward design. And I sort of alluded to, part of the reason is that, you know, entrance for the mobility-impaired folks having to actually go through the garage, again, just the whole thing seems kind of strange to me. I would echo the concerns or the request for green walls on these garages. I got to say, I'm not a big fan of precast concrete. I know that might go to the office building, but I think there's a few other places here where you have precast concrete. You know, I mentioned of K Street, there's a lot of buildings that I don't think have aged real well, that were precast concrete. I'm just not a big fan of it for whatever it's worth, and to the extent there, there needs to be some, maybe it's cost savings, I don't know. I would suggest that all of the garages have that living wall, the green wall, growing up them, to cover up any precast concrete you feel like you need to use. Let's see what else I've got. I do have some concerns about that school parking area and how that's going to work with kind of jutting into it a little bit, and how it's going to work in its ultimate condition. I'm not sure I have a whole lot to say, although it concerns me. I don't have a solution for you. And so let's see what else I've got here. You know, I like the light architecture that you've got, you know, in terms of colors and the like. I think that light is nice, it's modern, but I don't like it coming from precast concrete. So I'm not sure what to add on that. Let's see. If we add in this B4, do we know what square footage we're at now that we've added some more? You've taken maybe another third of an acre. When you add in B4, what do we get up to as far as total area for commercial uses? Have we done that number?
We have run those numbers. I don't have that on me tonight, but we are still well under the total. I think we're at nine. Why don't I get you the exact number? I've shared that exhibit with staff, but I.
Nine point seven seven for the total acreage.
Thank you, Carly.
And that's including the, the phase two office?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, great. So I think that's all I've got. I have other things, but it's getting late. We actually have a whole bunch of other items on the agenda, and so maybe I'll just end with that. And unless there are any other comments from anyone, I guess I would, A, thank you. I know you put a lot of work in there. I know these are very challenging times, and there's a lot of things pushing and pulling everybody in every different direction. So I think we all appreciate the times we live in, but, you know, let's keep moving forward and, you know, keep this project on track as originally envisioned, and I think it's going to be great for the city. So thank you. We look forward, I guess, to hearing more from you next week. But unless there's anyone else has anything to add, maybe we'll just end with that and move on to our next item. So thank you all for coming out once again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all the feedback and comments.
All right, thank you all. Take care. All right, so now can we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the discussion of the proposed agreement between the City of Falls Church and Fairfax County for CDBG and Home Investment Partnership Program funds? And I believe Nancy Vincent is maybe on the air with us, who could explain it?
Good evening, yes.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Dana Lewis has done a great job of managing the process of moving our agreement for this federal grant program from Arlington to Fairfax County. And so I'm going to let her explain to you some of the contact that she's been working on, and some of the differences that we can expect from, between Arlington and Fairfax County. So Dana, go ahead.
Great. Listen, let me just, if I could, and I wouldn't warn is not the right word, but just remind you of the hour, that we still have a lot of things on the agenda. So if we could all just keep that in mind going forward, so we can get out of here before 1:00 in the morning. But anyway, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vincent, and thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Good evening. Gotcha, I'll be brief. So just to remind you from our conversation that we had in May 18th, the City of Falls Church is not eligible to receive CDBG funds on our own, CDBG and home grants on our own. So we have to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with another jurisdiction in order to get those funds. You have to have at least 50,000 residents in order to qualify for funding, and we don't have that, obviously. And so in 1985, we started our agreement with Arlington County. And so we have decided to transition with Fairfax County, which we discussed with you all at the, at that last meeting in May. The reasons for that is because we'll have more of a connection with their human services. We already partner with them on many of those. We'll be able to do regional housing development projects and collaboration, housing finance opportunities, CDB, I mean, our nonprofits can apply for additional funds. They have a NOFA for nonprofits for scattered site development. And our residents can apply for down payment, housing rehabilitation and down payment funds. So the agreement that we have with them is generally based on the agreement that we had with Arlington County. As a matter of fact, they contacted us to use that as a starting point. So we will be, the agreement will be with the Fairfax County Department of Housing and Community Development. And so we're talking about program years, fiscal year 2021, 2022, and 2023. So this would start on July 1st, 2021. And so what we'll be doing is working with, undertaking low-income housing assistance and community development activities benefiting persons with low to moderate incomes. And so, and we will now be part of their action plan. So when Fairfax County submits to HUD what they'll be doing with their funds, we will now be part of that. But we can, it doesn't keep us from applying from other federal funds. And we'll have the same requirements as our subrecipients. And then we'll be responsible for keeping track of records for our grantees, and any program income that we have will go back to them. And any materials that we receive have, just have to indicate that we get the funds from Fairfax County and HUD. And so otherwise, the, the terms of the agreement are pretty much the same as what we had with Arlington County. It has not changed much, but we get much more in the way of benefits. So that's kind of in a nutshell. Do you have any questions?
All right, well, let's find out. Anyone have any questions, comments?
Mayor, I just had a quick one.
All right, Ms. Arti.
On lines between 54 and 59, the main risk I want to make sure we don't have is that, is there a risk that the county doesn't approve our list of submitted, I guess, CDBG uses? Because it says that it still needs to be, is approved by our, is our city council and then actually gets sent to Fairfax for their consideration and approval? Are we still autonomous in deciding what should get CDBG funding within our jurisdiction?
Well, we would make the, first of all, this, we would make a recommendation to council that we already do right now. Then once you all approve that funding, then we would submit it to them, and then they would approve that. Same process that we had with Arlington County, so it's exactly the same. So, but they wouldn't, you know, once we make the approval, then they would approve it.
All right, other questions?
So there isn't a chance that we would get overridden and lose the funding on the?
I don't, I don't think so at all. We've already discussed what types of projects we would be recommending for funding. There are already an agreement that for 2021, you know, our grantees that we currently have will be funded. So I don't see that, you know, being an issue at all.
Great.
All right, other questions? Comments? All right, well, thanks for sticking around two and a half hours for your five minutes of fame. But we appreciate it, appreciate all the fine work you do, and thank you so much. All right, let's move on to our next item, which is a presentation and discussion regarding cash and loop payments for affordable dwelling units. dwelling units. And I guess, Ms. Vincent, are you going to handle that as well?
I'll, I'll let Ms. Lewis introduce our speaker, the consultant that we've hired to handle this proj, this project.
All right. Have at it.
Okay. We have Ted Risher from Boundary Stone Partners, and he is the consultant that the city hired to take a look at a way for us to receive cash for, you know, development of ADUs in place of ADUs, and to take a look at how we would receive that cash and come up with a process for us to determine an amount. So that's the gist of it. And so this is something that was recommended from the Affordable Living Policy and the Housing Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. Both policy documents recommended that we take a look at a way to receive cash for projects to use for affordable housing specifically. And so that's why we proceeded with hiring the consultant. And so Ted has a presentation that he's going to give to you. He's developed a process and a way to do it. And it's pretty simple. And so he's going to explain that to you.
All right. Thank you much. Ted, where are you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right here. Thank you, Dana, for the introduction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Are you reading me okay? Are you hearing me?
We're hearing you just fine. Thank you.
All right. So Cindy, I'm actually getting the image. So if you want to just advance to the next slide, I'll make this brief. As I know, we have other things to take care of as well, but want to move through this comprehensively. So just a little background, a couple of months ago, we were awarded the contract to conduct this study on the, the method, on developing a methodology to charging a payment in lieu of providing ADUs to be used in negotiations with developers. There were several components of the scope that called for us to sort of do a peer review and also take in recommendations, not only from internal city staff and elected officials, but also private developers and, and other stakeholders. You know, original goal was to have it to council by the end of April in our session, but obviously we've been very, rendered very fluid by the pandemic. So happy to be with you tonight. On the peer analysis study, we really stayed inside the Beltway and adjacent to the City of Falls Church, Fairfax County, Arlington County, City of Alexandria were our primary comparables that we looked at, had some in-depth conversation with affordable housing professionals on staff with both those counties, as well as with the City of Alexandria. And the, and the tools they're using are really, you know, nothing surprising in terms of, you know, coming up with sort of a scale of charges to be levied against certain, certain product types, when projects are seeking regulatory relief, things such as site plans, subdivisions, rezonings, and special exceptions. In terms of the city stakeholder summary, we spoke with staff and elected members of HHS, EDA, executive suite staff. We also talked to many developers, including our partners at EYA, P&amp;Hoffman, also JBG, and some of the local developers who know Falls Church the best. And really, the, the, the hot, you know, the high-end, you know, recommendation that came out of those conversations with external developers is predictability, you know, and making sure that we're signaling to the development community that you can, you know, you can understand exactly how we want to begin this conversation. And while I admired that, that requirement and saw it in our, saw it in our peers within the Beltway on the Virginia side, we think that starting off with a scale is slightly dangerous. We want to make sure that this formula and this process has a chance to grow organically. And so we're actually going to be eliminating set charges because we heard from our peers that sometimes these charges fall behind the market quickly and become an automatic default position for some developers that coming to, that are coming to the city. So next, next slide, Cindy. You know, really, really what we're talking about is a, is a present value process. We're, we're essentially looking at, you know, the, the market rents and the affordable rents as determined by HHS. We're taking those rents out over time with individual escalations and vacancies and other factors. And we're determining what that delta is between, you know, the, the market rent and the affordable rent. And then we're simply doing a discount analysis, you know, we're doing a discounting exercise to figure out what that value is. And that's where we're trying to start this conversation. So if you go to the first, the next slide, Cindy, really determining what the existing rents are in the city. Obviously, the affordable rents are provided through HUD, through HHS. And this is the current, you know, this is, these are the current affordable rents based on income bands in the city that HHS uses. There are not specific rents for three bedroom dens or four bedrooms promulgated by HUD. So that's something we have to work on developing ourselves if we want to include those. And then actually, we took a review of recently developed projects, including Tenor, Lincoln and Tenor, Northgate, Pearson Square, and West Broad, really issuing the sort of Class B product in the market, because that's just not something that we're going to find reasonable comparable information for. These numbers really need to be updated pretty seriously and pretty regularly in order to make the outputs more rigorous. So again, this is an exercise we should go through on a monthly or quarterly basis where we look at new product in the market so that we can get a better handle on market rents. The HUD rents for the, the PMSA are obviously issued on a longer, on a longer term basis, but keeping the, keeping this data up to date is important. Next slide, Cindy. And then this really is, this really is where, you know, the majority of the work is done in the model. You can model for everything. It's, it's going to allow you to take up to a 35-year period. It depends on when the payment is, the, when the payment is charged, and then it can take up to an additional 34 years to discount. It essentially asks you for an escalation. It asks you, first of all, for an income band that you're, that you're solving for, and you can just drop that down and solve for anything. I'm sorry, these, these images aren't complete. It's just visually, they're very large because they're testing for a lot of data. But essentially, everything's automatic. You, you drop that AMI band down and it'll, it'll automatically change the value for each unit. We're using a 30-year, 30-year treasury yield, which as of two days ago was 143. We're using a spread of 600 basis points, basically to get to the midpoint between what we think the city's cost of funds are and private developers' cost of funds are. Again, this will be a philosophical conversation you'll have with developers, and this will grow organically over time. But we think this is a reasonable starting point to value that income delta. We use a 30-year discount period. And by, and by the way, all these assumptions can be changed. And then we use vacancy factors for both the market rate units and the ADU units. And what you're seeing in those first two bands of lines right there is essentially for studios and one bedrooms, you're seeing the, based on when the payment is charged, the testing segment changes. And you're seeing this taken out for the 30 years as designated in one of the inputs. And it's essentially taking that delta between the market and the affordable rent and discounting it back at the discount rate that's, that's been built above. So nothing earth shattering. We're not splitting the atom here. This is a very recognizable process and methodology. It will be so to your development partners. Really where the conversations are going to lie are in the assumptions going into developing these values. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see the culmination of that, those unit calculations. If you decide, if you're deciding that you're testing for 80% of AMI and you want to reserve 6% of your units on a prorata basis for families making up to that amount, then those payment calculations are included here. And essentially, it's, it's taking the, the building program, in this case, this is a 100,000 square foot building with 90,000 gross square feet of, of residential space, 88 units. It's taking the, the program and it's splitting it prorata across the program to designate units as ADUs. And then it's taking the value from previous page, bringing it forward, multiplying it by the units. It's obviously rounding. And then it's coming up with a tally there. So, you know, if, if what you were trying to achieve was to, you know, essentially get a cash payment in lieu of being able to provide six units of housing affordable to households making 80% of area median income for a period of 30 years, this is your payment. Next slide. So the base case in this, as I said, was, was that residential building. And obviously, it's either seeking, it's some, seeking some sort of relief that, that allows you to, you know, introduce this methodology into your conversations with developers. As I said, 6% of the units were set aside. All these assumptions can be changed. They'll all change automatic. They'll all produce different values automatically. And then again, the discount rate was built off the 30-year treasury and really attempting to split the difference between city cost of funds and private cost of funds, discount periods 30 years. And there I just did some sensitivity analysis to try and show what the different values would be assuming, you know, based on income, assuming that baseline project and that, that's set aside. Really what we're trying to do is, is start a conversation. And we're hesitant to set values per square foot or per, or per floor of height, which is what the city is more used to, because we don't want to, we don't want to fall into the trap of, of assigning values that are, like I said before, completely overcome by the market and, and difficult to change then, or make justification for changing during dynamic discussions with developers. So this process is straightforward. This process is very recognizable to developers. Where the conversations and where, where the excitement will be, quite honestly, is, is discussing those different assumptions that go into calculating this. The model can do a lot more. The model can do a similar calculation for condominium projects based on basic assumptions on what we think an acceptable level of gross income per month is, is reasonable for housing, all-in housing costs. It can also levy charges against other real estate types, given the city's position regarding trying to generate non-residential development. That feature was shelved. There was all, there is also a tab in the model that allows you to convert this upfront payment into a stream of payments, five years, 10 years, or whatever. On a nominal basis, it produces more cash for the city, but on a discounted basis, it's essentially, you know, the same on a time value money basis for developers. It's something that some developers expressed an interest in, so wanted to give it there. But essentially, these three tabs are sufficient to start this conversation and start the city off in, in hopefully a good position to extract value from its development partners in a fair and equitable manner. So that's the conclusion of, of this presentation. And I'm happy to take questions from, from members of the council.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and open up to the questions and comments. Is this, let me ask you, Ted, just for starters, did you produce, is this a model you've done that the city staff is going to plug numbers in, a formula, a program? Or how is this going to be used in real life applications?
Yes. It's a model that's dynamic that the city staff has, and we've been fine tuning it over the last two months. So it's very much, it's very much, I, I think, ready to take any input that city staff wants to put in there, and it will produce a, you know, it'll produce a reliable output.
So is this like a computer program or something?
It's just an Excel spreadsheet, sir.
Gotcha. And so staff has been quote-trained how to use this?
They've been, they've been using it a lot. And I'm obviously available anytime they experience any problems with it. But training may be a, a more formal term than what we've been doing.
Okay. All right. Let's open it up to questions, comments. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Mayor, I do.
Yes, Ms. Hardy.
So I have one for you, Ted, and then just two for city staff. So thanks, Ted, for this. Seems pretty straightforward, as you had said before in the preview with the Housing Commission. Have we run this through kind of what our model is and then what, let's say Arlington's model would generate, the value of these ADU units would be? And then done that comparison?
Yeah. Our model is actually producing more of a payment. And that is without levying any charges against the assumed ground floor, retail, and other space in this notional project. And one of the, one of the cautionary tales we got, you know, informally between our discussions with staff in Arlington County, and if I named a name, I'm sure most of you would know her, is that they wished they hadn't set per square foot rate charges for things, because they quickly found that within 12 or 18 months, the market moved too fast and developers would literally come in and just say, where do I give, you know, where do I give my check? Because it was much more advantageous for them to, to, you know, to, to provide the cash instead of providing the housing. And so what we're trying to do is probably, you know, create a situation where the city is in a good position to negotiate with developers and not necessarily sort of outjump its coverage before, you know, the market does.
Yeah. So while Arlington probably regrets not hiring you to do this for them, I guess one thing we need to think about is when developers who might work in Arlington versus Falls Church, they're going to say, gosh, I get a much better deal when I do this in Arlington. And we'll probably have to spend some time defending the assumptions that go into your model, too.
And Arlington still uses a form of this analysis for bonus density, so it won't be completely alien to developers working in both jurisdictions. But also, too, this, like I've said, this is, this will be a very organic process. And what we're trying to do is set a baseline for discussions that hopefully come to, you know, that hopefully produce a result that is, that is fair and equitable to both parties. But no, no developer should be surprised by this methodology. It's not like we're reinventing the, you know, the wheel.
Yeah. How to do NPV, I think, is not a new thing. So I think it'll be
Right.
familiar. So I guess the money question. So Founders Row was, I guess, our, our first and the upcoming project where we've been able to negotiate this important flexibility. Have we run this on, I guess, the 6% units for Founders Row? To know how much those units are valued at?
We've, we've not done that yet.
And when do we plan to and when do we need to? Because I think the decision is probably coming up soon, I presume.
I think our first goal was to have council give feedback on the, on the model to make sure we were on the right page, and then we could use it after that. So I think that's what we'll plan to do after tonight. Because, you know, all of council has not seen the model yet. So we wanted to get council feedback first.
Okay. So do we know when we have to decide or have the discussions with the Founders Row developers?
So this is why the, that is at the city's option. We can do it basically anytime. And
But before they're built, I presume, and delivered, right?
Well, no, actually, we can do it after they're built and delivered. So we could do it in the future. That's the way that that voluntary concession was drafted. I'm sure, however, they would prefer, if, if we did want to exercise that option, they would want to know that soon. With this model, there still is negotiation, as Ted noted. Everything depends on the discount rate that you use. It really has a major difference in value, a 6% discount rate versus a 10% discount rate. And so that, you know, we're going to kind of need to settle in on this thing and get sort of a pattern of how we use it. And, but I think a, a good first exercise obviously would be with the Founders Row. And would also will be right immediately before us is also with the 10-acre site that we just got briefed on. I think the other key issue for the city that has always been the case is what, what are our immediate plans with the money? And how can we turn that into a useful affordable housing benefit for citizens, you know, quickly? And that's always been our challenge. Arlington has a big enough of a pipeline that they have, you know, a, a very significant financial capacity. Our volume is so much lower that it's, it's more challenging, which is why we've always opted for ADUs in the buildings. But this tool gives us the way to have that negotiation. And so we can turn around very quickly and, and run it on Founders Row and, and virtually no time at all.
Great. So I'd like to request that, because I think, like, again, it's important to have the option of flexibility, but I don't know whether we need to have the negotiation if staff doesn't have a really good use for the money at the present. Like, I don't want to Like, I don't want to have to go through that work if you don't have a really compelling use for it either, and maybe we should take the unit. So I guess if we can run this for the Founders Row units, know how much we might be looking at, and then have some thoughts around what we might do with that money, I think that's important for the continued affordable housing discussion. That's it for me.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Yeah, quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Good to hear from you again. In your conversations with developers in other jurisdictions, in terms of the timing of when you would make the decision to convert from dedicated units to cash and lieu, what was kind of the preferred timing of that, both from the private sector as well as jurisdictions?
Well, I think the conversation, I think the anticipated time for sort of making that decision would be prior to approval of whatever relief they were seeking. And then, obviously, the payment, the actual payment, if that were the, if that were the method chosen, would probably be at permit issuance.
Okay. All right. It's good to know. Yeah, I'd like to actually see the model. Staff, if you guys have a copy of the Excel spreadsheet, I'd like to just dig through that.
Yeah, and the model actually lets you delay the payment for up to five years and still be able to discount thirty.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Ted. Always good to hear from you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Ted. This looks great. I have not had a chance to see it before now, and even if I had, I wouldn't really understand how it works. So I am going to trust that your hard work put into the hands of our staff will yield some very good information that we can use in gauging how we can get more affordable housing into some of these projects, or get money that will enable us to do affordable housing in other places when we build a new project. So I say go full speed ahead with it. The discount period, I mean, you've got thirty years as your model, but like at Founders Row, the units are in perpetuity. How does the model calculate perpetuity? What kind of number do you put in for forever?
Well, honestly, sir, it's an excellent question. Honestly, sir, I sort of limited it to thirty-five years on the basis that even if contractually the units were affordable in perpetuity on a time value money basis, discounting much past thirty-five years is not going to produce a lot. Also, just sort of a custom of the industry, discounting, you know, a hundred years, the difference between discounting fifty years and discounting a hundred is probably negligible. So it's a great question and certainly something we should continue to discuss. That was my initial reasoning. I'm not saying that you don't have a good point, and maybe we shouldn't discuss it further.
Okay. Well, that's, so is it sort of a life of building kind of way of looking at it? Or, well, whatever, I don't need to know the details.
It's more just...
You know, we're doing, like up at West Falls, we're going to do a deal, I hope, that has a perpetuity element to it. We just want to make sure we're comfortable, maybe. Maybe we should have a specific number that we agree that we'll plug in, just to make sure that, you know, project to project, we're doing the same thing every time for purposes of equity to the developer.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other comments, questions? Let me ask staff then, are you all conversant on using this model?
Somewhat, or I can, Ted is also available if I need him. I'm thinking that he is.
I always make myself available.
Going forward and not in perpetuity, would you guys feel like you can get up to speed on using this and discount rates and what would be appropriate use of a discount? What discount rate would be appropriate to utilize?
Absolutely, we would.
Okay. Other questions, comments? All right. Well, thank you very much for coming to join us. And all of you, including Mr. Richard, thank you for your good work on putting this model together for us. We thank you all. This is important stuff for us and important for our community, so we greatly appreciate it. Let's move on then to schedule and comments, and then we'll be going into closed session. So we do have a ways to go before we adjourn tonight. Are there any comments about schedule or just general council comments or requests?
Mayor, I had a couple of things.
Yeah, okay, go for it.
So looking at the schedule, the Appointments Committee has received the final, I think it's sixty-eight, applications for the police use of force, which I think is double what we had seen for Stormwater. So we are going through all of that, and then we'll be narrowing them down for interviews on July fifteenth and July twenty-second with a recommendation to council for our July twenty-eighth meeting. So thank you all to everyone in the community who has submitted. I think I've been really impressed, as always, by all the passion and the experience and all the different perspectives, especially for this important issue. So that's a heads up for your schedule. And if anyone has input on suggestions for kind of the committee makeup, let the Appointments Committee know. And then two requests for Wyatt. So Wyatt, as we've talked about in the past, I would support how the city could help with school reopening plans. And I think in the past, we've talked about using CARES money. I think now that the schools have further refined their opening plans, and I think knowing that we're not going to be able to run as many school buses, if there's any city work that we can do to help with walking and biking routes, knowing that we're going to have a lot more students walking and biking or getting driven to school instead of using school buses, I think those would be great improvements to embark on this summer in preparation for school reopening.
Great, great suggestion. Appreciate that. And I had not thought about it in terms of using CARES money for that purpose, but we will certainly explore doing that. And I will just note, at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting last week, the discussion of the schools' needs as they work through their reopening was part of that, and we're going to follow up with them in a more detailed way. And we'll be presenting to the City Council in July on a proposed budget for the use of CARES money.
Great. And if it's not CARES money, then, you know, I...
Other ways, right.
Yes, yes. Just, I think it's a good opportunity for us to work with schools, because I think any improvements we do to ped facilities will help people beyond the kids, too.
Ms. Hardy, is it okay if I comment?
Yes, yes, please jump in.
I just wanted to let you know a couple of things. One is, we have a meeting with Sue Long this week to begin mapping out those safe routes to school for walking and biking. And we will be running the same number of buses that we've always run next fall. The only difference is that we will have limited capacity in those buses. So we will be working with our families in hopes of developing more opportunities for biking and walking, but did want to let you know that we do have a meeting on the books to begin putting that together with Sue Long this week.
Great. And then my second request, Wyatt, is along the lines of kind of COVID recovery. So just like we've been supporting restaurants and retail businesses to expand into public spaces, that they have more room for social distancing, I think we've raised whether businesses can also use other public spaces like parks on a temporary basis. So whether that's exercise groups, which I know in the past, we don't allow them to use it unless they were a vendor working with the city, but obviously, given the pandemic, I think we're in unique circumstances where I'd like to see us offer that flexibility. Creative Cauldron, for example, has suggested whether they can hold outdoor performances in places like Mr. Brown's Park or tennis courts. So I think those are really creative ideas, and if, again, if we can support our business community in those ways, I'd like to at least figure out how we can do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Sorry, Wyatt, I was just going to report that I'm meeting with Rex and Park staff tomorrow, based on your idea. You brainstormed both for what they functionally can do, but also as a risk manager, looking at it from an insurance perspective. And then we'll certainly follow up with Mr. Shields.
And since there will be a change in policy that's COVID emergency-related, we'll also get a note out to the full council in terms of our thinking on this, as we've tried to do before any other major steps during the COVID emergency, just to give a chance for council comment. But Danny and Amy have been trying to think through, what are some options that we could do to have our parks be possibly more useful for our gyms and other businesses that are dealing with just an incredible crisis? And so that thought process is in motion.
Great, thank you.
And we will need to be sure that there's an equitable way for making those spaces available for all businesses, but I will work with the Parks folks and Cindy on that.
Thank you.
All right, other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have comments. Mr. Shields, you noted in the email earlier today that the court is opening this week?
That is correct.
City Hall?
That is correct, yes. On Wednesday, July eighth, it will be a return to court services here in City Hall.
And is there any kind of fanfare? Are they just opening court and having court?
Well, I asked the sheriff that question, and they were not really planning a lot of fanfare. So I asked them to get back with me if they were, but the judges did come to the City Council's opening ceremony, and so I think the thinking is that there's not going to be a lot of fanfare. That's what I've gathered.
Okay. I'm looking at our schedule going forward, and I don't see a firearms ordinance on there. And I'm wondering when that is going to appear in work session.
So I did put it in there for a discussion at your June twentieth work session, and I put it in there just on Monday after discussing it with Chief Gavin. But we've got Chief Gavin, Carol McCoskeri, and Cindy Messer will be working this issue together. And I did send out the small working group, and there, they put together sort of a matrix of options, and we're going to flush that out and bring that discussion to the City Council on July twentieth.
Okay, very good. And last thing is just the census. I have seen some updates about the census, and it seems like we're at about eighty percent?
Yeah, I think that, I haven't checked it real recently, but that sounds right. And if that's true, it's really plateaued at about eighty percent for a while now.
Right. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to check to see if there's certain neighborhoods that aren't responding as well, or, because they're not going to go door-to-door, are they? Census workers usually go door-to-door?
Yeah, I need to get up to speed on exactly what the plan is.
Okay. I mean, I just, I'd want to make sure, I think there's a few more months where they're still collecting data, and I just want to make sure that we access as many of the people who live in the city as possible. And if there are certain neighborhoods where response is low, if there's anything our staff can do to make sure that people do respond.
That is correct. And the door-to-door is the last option. It's the most expensive option. It's the one that the Census Bureau is trying to do everything they can before they start going door-to-door, I think, is the approach.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other comments before we move into closed session? All right, so why don't we do this? Why don't we take a short break to get ourselves in a closed session mode? I see there's a number of participants and attendees who I think will not be following us in the closed session. Maybe we could just make sure that it's just the folks who need to be in closed session are continuing on in this conversation in the online meeting. But do we want to go ahead and do our motion now and then take a five-minute break and then come into closed session? I'm going to take that as a yes. Upon a motion made by council member...
Duncan.
Seconded by council member...
Hardy.
And passed by a vote of City Council, council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8, consultation with legal counsel employee retained by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. In particular, discussions of matters related to the development of George Mason High School site and Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining strategy or negotiating position of the city. Contracts for development of and disposition of property for the West Falls Church campus project and inside proposal for purchase of public park and adjacent park place. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Snyder?
Yes.
Z is absent, Tartar, yep. All right.
Snyder is on, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant Z, Z is absent. I did get your phone. All right, so it's ten thirty-four. Let's take a five-minute break and reconvene at ten forty and making sure that it's just the folks who should be on this call. Continue on. Upon a motion made by council member...
Duncan.
Seconded by council member...
Snyder.
And passed by a vote of City Council, council reconvened in open session. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Z is absent, Tartar, yep. All right, this is the certification. It's twelve twelve, by the way. This is the certification. Upon a motion made by council member...
Hardy.
And seconded by council member...
Snyder.
And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session. It was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the body. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Z is absent, Tartar, yep. All right, is there anything else to say tonight?
Move adjourn.
I will do that in honor of Dan Z. I will, we are adjourned today. Good night.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.